Clermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Here. Please stand for the pledge and remarks by Councilmember Harding.
Thanks. You can be seated, please. So the seven of us are kind of like a family and one minute we could be laughing together and the next minute we might be disagreeing about something, but like a family, we're also a team and we know that we must work together for a common goal and that is to make Omaha a better place for all. One more thing about a family. Sometimes we have relatives that experience some health issues and when those occur, we pray that they find the cause and that they're able to enjoy a full recovery. Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting and a current copy of the meeting act is posted in the white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate you being here and look forward to your testimony on our many items today. Please turn your cell phones off or turn them to vibrate. And our first item today is we have a presentation by Councilmember Bagley regarding the Irish Ambassador who will soon be visiting Omaha. Mr. Bagley.
Thanks, Mr. President. I have a proclamation to read today. Whereas Irish Ambassador to the United States, Daniel Mulhall will make his first visit to Nebraska from February 26th through March 1st, 2022, and along with his wife, Greta, will be honored guests at the Nebraska Statehood Dinner, celebrating Nebraska's admission to the Union on March 1st, 1867. And whereas Irish American Heritage Month celebrates Irish-American communities throughout the nation and recognizes the conspicuous contributions of Irish immigrants in helping to establish the city of Omaha, culminating with the St. Patrick's Day Parade on March 17th. And whereas the city council of the city of Omaha recognizes the official designation of March as Irish-American Heritage Month by the President of the United States. And whereas 2022 marks the 20th anniversary of the creation of Omaha's fourth sister city, Naas, in County Kildare, Ireland, and the 150th anniversary of the Omaha St. Patrick's Day Parade, and will be commemorated with a visit by Naas Mayor Emeritus, Timmy Conway. And now therefore be it resolved that the city of Omaha officially welcomes Ambassador and Mrs. Mulhall and designates March 1st, 2022, as Daniel and Greta Mulhall Day. In witness whereof, we have set our hands and caused the official seal of the city of Omaha to be affixed on this 15th day of February 2022. A couple remarks I'd like to make in honor of this is the son of an Irish father and Irish mother. It's pretty exciting that is the elected representative and the honored city councilman to be sitting here giving this, the comments on... My family, we came from County Cary. Did a little digging on this and my father's, his, my aunt married an Irishman from Schlego and my Aunt Mary Ann married an Irishman from Limerick. So I had the fun to go visit in 2017 with my family to Ireland and it really was amazing to see the country where my immigrants and many people from this community that built Omaha came from. I heard from several people in my district when they saw this proclamation, on the pride they had in the marriage. I'd like to thank her for, there's going to be an honor for Ambassador Mulhall and his wife here in a couple of weeks with the city. But as Irish immigrants, they helped build Omaha and the stories and the contributions they made, including the son of a teacher and mailman that became a union leader and city council member that has a great honor on behalf of the Irish and all the immigrants that built Omaha, to honor Ambassador Mulhall when he comes here in a couple of weeks. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Item six, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Capriano located west of 210th and Emmett Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. B's Communication and Opposition.
Public hearing and vote on number six is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, excuse me. Reagan Pence with Lamprey and Nielsen representing my client, 14710 West Dodge Road. Proponent of the project, approximately a 15-acre site located in Elkhorn, about two-thirds of a mile from the Elkhorn Downtown District, closer to the Maple and Pacific Entrance. We are looking to create a combination of multifamily and single-family project. We are rezoning, proposing to rezone from agriculture to R6 PUD to the south and R5 to the north, in partnership with Happy Dad for Humanity for the lots to the north. A little bit more about the site. Currently, we are in compliance.
Sure. Yeah, I think, there you go. It might help to push it all the way up to the arm there. Okay, that's good.
Currently in compliance with the Omaha Master Plan. We have R5 to the north. We are designing the R6 PUD, designed to the R5, more restrictive zoning standards for the multifamily. The multifamily with, you know, it's a spectrum of multifamily. This is a lower-density multifamily. It's a two-story product. We do have a series of outlots. It is a very challenging site with grading. This park's at approximately two to one and we have a garage per unit, whether it's built into the building or detached. With regards to setbacks by code, the side yards are supposed to be 25, or excuse me, 10 feet. We actually have 25 to the south and then we have 60 for a rear yard setback to the north, so considerably larger than what is required by code. With regards to the buffer yards, there is a 20-foot buffer yard requirement to the south and the east. Again, we are providing a 25-foot setback or a buffer yard to the south and then a 60-foot to the east. So again, more than code is required. Drainage, we are capturing all of the site, or site drainage. We have prepared, provided PCSMP, a drainage study and a grading plan for review with the city. We have provided a preliminary, or excuse me, a traffic study that shows the impact of this, this project to the Elkhorn Drive and surrounding streets. Currently, there's minimal impact. It still operates at a B level, which is considered also very good. We are providing a connection, public way, public right-of-way connection from the existing stub at Emmett Street to Elkhorn Drive and then we are extending the stub at, excuse me, Cleveland Street to the south. And then we are also providing a stub to the north. So with that, I'd like to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents on number six today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Motion in a second. Roll call.
Clermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, seven to zero.
Thanks.
Items seven through 10 can be considered together for Westbury Farm, Replat Two, located southeast of 218th and Karen Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item seven and eight, ordinance is to rezone this property from R4 District to DR District and R4 District. Item nine, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 10, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items seven through 10 today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, Members of the Council, John Bachman, 10250 Regency Circle. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Clermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 11, a resolution to approve the amendment to the downtown northeast redevelopment plan for a nine-acre project site generally known as 1804 Capitol Avenue, which will consist of housing, retail, office space, and parking. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 11 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Councilmember Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a few questions just for the record, just so that people on the, on the Zoom call as well as in District Two are kind of informed about what's going on in the community. And so I'd like for the city planning department to come up and answer this question and provide information about the components of a comprehensive redevelopment plan because that's what we're talking about in this agenda item today.
Sure. Dave Fanslaw, City Planning. I didn't hear a question, but I'll tell you why we're here. Okay. So yeah, I'd say it's an amendment to an existing redevelopment plan, the northeast downtown redevelopment plan that was approved a few decades ago. That plan has been amended from time to time as projects come along. This is just another project within that boundary and is the reason why we're here today, to amend that. At pre-council, you had asked what we do as far as redevelopment plans. So we start out by identifying obviously the area and any general direction that we want a certain area to go with some goals in mind. We do a inventory of existing conditions, so building conditions, infrastructure conditions, roadway conditions, zoning, land use, kind of get all the information about the area that we want to be a part of a redevelopment plan. And then we set out, then we set out a development plan, what is basically the goal of that redevelopment plan. We usually follow it up with some strategies and a whole bunch of information, again, related to those existing conditions.
Okay.
It's a, it's a pattern that we follow time and time again.
Is there any way, I need to have that information available for my record so that I can review it. And so at this time, I would like to, because I didn't see that as a part of the attachment, any of that extra information such as transportation. Perhaps you have something in mind in terms of a developer coming in over there at the once-was Civic Auditorium. Is there a developer in mind that you, that city planning has in mind to do something over there? I'm not sure because that information was lacking.
Well, we've been working, well, because it's not necessarily part of this plan.
Okay.
Yeah, we have a developer in mind to redevelop the Civic Auditorium site. This particular amendment to the northeast downtown redevelopment area was at Planning Board on January 5th and we sent city council staff the entire agenda and all the attachments for all of those Planning Board cases on December 30th. So they should have been given to all seven of you.
And so did that also include things like in your, on your redevelopment plan, it should provide information regarding public transportation, public utilities, recreational and community facilities, and other public improvements?
Again, this is, I don't want to interrupt. This is a amendment to that overall plan specifically for the Civic Auditorium site.
Okay. And so, no, that wasn't included in there?
It's included in the original plan.
But not when you have an amended plan such as this?
We, I'm, I'd have to, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look over my shoulder and hopefully Jen Taylor can come help me out. She, she helped us offer, author that plan.
Good afternoon, Members of City Council, Jennifer Taylor, City Law Department. And to be clear, this is an amendment to the downtown northeast plan. The downtown northeast plan from 30 or 40 years ago was kind of an overall general concept as to how we wanted to redevelop properties within the area. Periodically, when we actually have an actual project that comes along, we'll amend that plan to specifically identify and describe that particular project. So in the amendment to the redevelopment plan that you have before you, there actually are sections that describe the existing conditions in the project area, including land use, occupancy, conditions, and zoning, whether or not there's any historic properties in the area, the present valuation of the property that's subject to the redevelopment plan, as well as a description of the project itself, street conditions, grades, utilities, also the project costs, and the projected public financing associated with that. Those are all contained in the amendment that's actually included in your packets before you today. Happy to answer any questions on that. The last amendment we had specific to the civic site, just so that you're aware, was three or four years ago, we amended the downtown northeast redevelopment plan to describe a redevelopment project for the civic site that actually was the demolition of the Civic Auditorium. And that plan authorized the demolition of the structure and authorized the city to utilize redevelopment bonds to pay for the cost of that demolition. This particular amendment describes a proposed project that we're looking or entertaining to conduct or foster or participate in on the site, describes the project to the extent that there is a general description of the project, what we need to do. And approval of that plan will facilitate us moving forward to proceed with that project.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
No, thank you. Thank you as well. So I will go ahead and, I will go ahead and make a motion to accept the resolution.
Motion in a second to approve. Councilman Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just gonna say, and I think Jen touched on it, but I think that the original downtown northeast redevelopment plan might have been 1997. So that's, that's how old the original plan is. And it's been amended many times over the years, but just a bit of unused, unneeded trivia.
New city council persons on, on board here. So it's very much needed.
Thank you. Councilman Clermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. And this question may be for the Planning Director, Mr. Fanslaw. As we heard earlier, the land use, occupancy, condition, and zoning category, obviously it says loud and clear in the second sentence, the project area includes the former Civic Auditorium site.
Sure.
I've been briefed on that site numerous times. It still sits empty. Is it too early to ask? Do we have a project intended to be used in that site?
We're working on that right now.
Nothing you can tell us about?
We've already...
If you're sworn to secrecy, I understand.
No.
But this is the, the time for communication.
We're not sworn to secrecy. It's, it's, it's in the, it's in the
Okay.
Plan. Yeah. Page two. So you have it in front of you?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So on the top, second paragraph, redevelopment plan. Want me to read it to you? I'm serious, I'm asking.
What I would like and what everybody in Omaha would like, when we have these parcels of land that sit empty and we have all these development changes.
Sure.
We would like to know what the developers bring into the site to benefit the city of Omaha.
I understand. It's in the plan.
Okay.
You want me to read what's in?
Yeah.
Okay.
You can read it to me.
Sure. All right.
For the record, thank you.
What's that?
Thank you. Yeah, read it, please.
Yes, sure. So the redevelopment plan proposes 250 to 300 market unit rate apartments, 120 to 140 affordable apartments, retail, main level, multifamily, 20 to 25 townhomes for sale surrounding the site on either side, and parking.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
It's important that you read that.
That's perfectly fine.
Thank you.
Yep, you bet.
Thank you. No further lights. There's a motion in a second to approve. Roll call.
Clermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 11 is approved, seven to zero.
Without objection, we'll move item number 13 up on the agenda next and then take item number 12 at the request of Councilmember Johnson and also the applicant. Madam Clerk.
Item 13, an ordinance to approve the Forever North Housing and Multi-Model Transportation Strategy located in an area generally bound by Ames Avenue on the north, Coming Street on the south, 20th Street on the east, and Highway 75 on the west. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. B's Communication and Support. C and D are amendments proposed by Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you. And I didn't interrupt the clerk there, but I will remind folks to turn your cell phones off. We won't ask again. We have a number of folks on these two agenda items, number 13 first and then number 12. There'll be two separate public hearings on these items. I think we have a lot of folks here to speak to them. I just want to get a sense of who intends to speak today for our planning purposes. If you might raise your hand if you intend to speak on item 13 as a proponent? Thank you. And how about opponents? Okay, thank you. What we'll do is, I don't intend to do, institute any kind of time limit or a three-minute rule like we sometimes do, but I would encourage you to try to limit your remarks to three minutes so we can hear from everyone and then also get to questions from council members. So having said that, we'll start with number 13. Proponents, please. The public hearing and vote is today. We'll hear from the Planning Department.
Good afternoon. Kelly Johnston Dorsey with the Planning Department. Forever North is a strategic action-oriented approach to enhance the ongoing community development efforts and to provide guidance for future development along the North 24th Street corridor. The boundaries are Ames Avenue on the north, Coming Street on the south, Highway 75 on the west, and 20th Street on the east. The community vision is the North 24th Street corridor developing into a vibrant, livable community that values existing residents, attracts new community members, and offers opportunities and experiences everyone can enjoy. This document is intended to be purposeful guidance that will attract new business but also protect current businesses and residents. Community engagement for Forever North was largely conducted in 2019. Engagement efforts included focusing community group meetings, stakeholder meetings, mailers, a Facebook page, media coverage, open office hours, place assessments, e-bike rides and tours, a block party, a two-day community design workshop, door-to-door canvassing, and online surveys. The plan was largely completed in 2019. However, announcements from Metro Transit regarding the Metro Next Study put a pause on the plan adoption until that study was complete, as the potential enhanced transit on North 24th Street could shift recommendations regarding transportation and land use. Forever North includes recommendations on land use and development, pedestrian connections, bicycle connections, transit, vehicles and parking, art, history, culture, and services and programs for people. This plan benefited from community support during the Planning Board hearing and the Planning Board unanimously recommended approval. I will keep my statements brief. Manny Cook was the city's neighborhood planner behind the Forever North effort and is he, he is here to testify as well.
Thank you. And was that my friend Preston Love with his phone that was still on? I thought I'd bust you there, Preston, but you got it handled, right? All right, thank you. Mr. Cook.
All right. Yep. Manny, Manny Cook, see, 2514 North 24th Street. Here representing myself, but then also Spark, which is the organization I work with now. Like Kelly said, led the Forever North Study. But I'll just dive into it and I'll just start by saying Forever North means forever, the north side, and even that name came from the community through that engagement process. And the number one thing that was mentioned by community members is that we do not want to be displaced, gentrified, or however else you want to define the forced removal of existing residents from our communities. Kelly stole my thunder a little bit because you mentioned all the community engagement that we did, so I'm gonna skip over that. But the strategies associated, housing and transportation studies showed the immense demand for housing in the area, and this was even prior to COVID. So I know during COVID, the housing crisis that kind of came to the surface, that already existed. So anyway, a few notes from the study that I think are important are that there's nearly 100 acres of vacant land within a quarter mile of 24th Street, that area from Ames to Coming, and demand for 90 to 195 new housing units per year through 2037. And this is coming straight from the document, so that's a total of 1,850 to 3,000, or 900 housing units within that area and in the surrounding area as well. Some of the organizations that have already referenced this strategy are the state's Missing Middle, Missing Middle Workforce Housing, the North Omaha Recovery Plan. It was referenced by the city to make sidewalk improvements around the 24th and Pratt area. Metro, I think Kelly mentioned this a little bit too, but they succeeded this strategy by starting to work on new transit along the corridor. Are they, this also helped them select 24th Street or that area for that study and for improved transit going forward. Let's see, streetscape planning by local organizations like the BID also referenced this plan. I try and call it a strategy because I know we have a plan coming up next to help. It's confusing sometimes. But anyway, so they referenced this strategy. And then there's been several facade improvement projects, including a project that my organization works on, which we call the Fabric Bays, which is just north of the Old Love Jazz, so 2514 through 2522, North 24th Street. So we've been working with partners to improve those facades and those buildings as a whole, activate those spaces. Also Spencer's Barbershop is another project, the Carnation Ballroom. And there's a lot of other projects that are underway and will come of the, after the proposed 24th and Lake Development Plan. North Omaha Trail Project, that's something that was referenced in this strategy and that is a project that I'm working on right now and that we will be breaking ground on hopefully at the end of March, just depending on the weather. But if it's like it is today, we will have no problems. And then is also referenced by North and Tele Services forthcoming, 24th and Lake Development. And those are somewhat larger projects, but the people and community or, and community organizations on 24th Street have also done their part to accomplish many of the quick wins and early action projects laid out in Forever North to start improving the area. And by my estimate, I would say at least about 15 of those quick wins or early action projects have been accomplished. So some of those things include working to create a cultural entrepreneur incubator. And if you haven't heard of Culture House, it's happened. And if you haven't heard of them, I would Google them or look them up on Facebook or Instagram or anything like that, or drive down 24th Street to 24th and work. North Omaha Trail Project, I mentioned that. Another thing that was outlined was coordinate community-led tours. So we have the North Omaha Legacy Tours, and I won't steal anyone's thunder on that. And then Jeff's Ride, which is a community bike ride that I lead, which we have, we've had 40 to 50 people from North Omaha riding on bikes through the community and into downtown on several occasions as well. Other things, creative programming of the Bryant Center. And friends of mine, Sandyada and Sherman Wells have done a great job of continuing and doing that. You know what? I could go on and on, but like I said, there's at least 15 things that have been accomplished so far. And so basically, the community has already started to fulfill this strategy and any opponents to this strategy would be opponents to how the communities living and working along North 24th Street want to see the area grow. They would be opponents to community engagement and opponents to equitable development in North Omaha. And any elected officials who would dare stand against this strategy would simply be abandoning their responsibilities to the community. So in short, what does the community want to see? The community wants to see infrastructure improvements that improve their quality of life. The community wants to see 24th Street redeveloped like a Main Street, like a urban downtown area and like a Black Wall Street. We want it to be like it used to be, if not better. The community wants well-designed, high-quality, affordable housing, and I think that's a duh. And then the community wants safe pedestrian-oriented streets that prioritize prioritize people who live and work in the community. that prioritize people who live and work in the community, because traffic speeds on 24th Street and the surrounding neighborhood streets is a problem, as well as the design of those streets. And again, the number one thing the community wants is protection from further displacement and gentrification. And in the plan, the number one priority under development is to protect residents from displacement. And I don't think there's any other city documents that I know of that have this type of language in them. This strategy is built on what the community wants and will help guide both development and infrastructure improvements while also serving as a foundation for city council to start developing formal anti-displacement policies. And I have some of those if you want them. I might give them to you later because they're in my bag over here. But the community and city departments have already done their job and then some, and now I think it's time for you to do your job and to take responsibility for equitable development on 24th Street. And I look forward to your unanimous vote on this strategy. And I also support the development of an implementation committee as laid out in the plan. So thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for your personal work on these plans. Next proponent, please.
Dewan Lamont Hayes, 5835 Corby Street. I had the pleasure of working with Manny Cook on the steering committee for the Forever North Study, and I personally have grown up in and along 24th Street most of my life, and after graduating, returned to Omaha to work with the Union for Contemporary Art and ultimately to Start Noise and lead the engagement. And one of the biggest gaps that we saw were there's a lot happening with the city making decisions about us, without us, and we have, this has been a pattern for generations, not for lack of any actual studies or formal attempts, because we've had many, many studies, just starting in the 70s, of what should happen, making sure that a lot of this engagement is meaningful and that the people feel that they are part of the development and that the development and what it looks like, especially the aesthetics of it, reflect what the community needs, and that everything that we're building in our built environment is actually bringing us together rather than driving us apart. And this type of plan that includes a level of engagement and communication and active strategy across generations, across experiences, is something that the city of Omaha really needs to take heed and as an example of how you actually engage community in decision-making, because we have record of people saying, this is what I like and this is why, and this is what my experience has been thus far. And so I please ask that you vote in support of Forever North and the North 24th Street Redevelopment Plan, because this is an opportunity for us to really take our future into our own hands and really make sure we have an informed, thoughtful approach to redevelopment and revitalization of the community. So if you have any questions, but thank you so much.
Thank you. Next proponent, please.
My name is Preston Love, P-R-E-S-T-O-N-L-O-V-E. It's a pleasure to be able to come to this city council and talk about good things in North Omaha. North Omaha is so rich in history and culture. Yet, I give tours and have given tours of North Omaha for years, and I often point at a building that has boarded up and has been boarded up since the 60s. It is part of our history that there has not been any serious or thoughtful development in North Omaha. We've had lots of development plans on paper and verbally and all of that. But those plans had commonalities, negative quite frankly. They didn't involve the community. They didn't involve displacement of people without a plan or thought or with heart. So I stand as a proponent of this plan because it is unique. And now I can take a tour up and down the 24th Street corridor, and I can point to some of our wonderful assets and some of our wonderful culture and some of our wonderful history, but now I can point to 24th and Lake on the northeast corner and say, that's going to be a new development. And that's going to be a new development from people from our community. And I can walk back and forth down the corridor and look with joy and celebrate where we're going. And so I'd ask that you, city council, would totally understand the bigger picture here is that North Omaha has been held hostage too long. It's time. And this particular plan I surely endorse because it's doing development, but it's doing it in the right way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next proponent, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Carmen Tapio, 1500 North 24th Street, Suite 111. And it's really an honor to stand before you today and just to recognize the moment that we were at as a community. Thank you, Mr. President, and to all the council members. I stand in support of the Forever North Plan as well as the 24th and Lake Redevelopment Plan. Our regional economy is robust and it is growing, and it is inspiring to see the continued momentum that we are experiencing, much of it because of the work of the people in this room and you that are on the dais today. My company, North End Tele Services, is a for-private and for-profit enterprise, and it is one of the fastest-growing businesses in our state as well as in our country, according to Ink Magazine. We understand the benefits of doing business and locating our business in North Omaha, where there is access to skilled talent pool that has an 80% high school and above educational attainment rate compared to the rest of our state, something that is not well-known, and that 68110 zip code has doubled the professionals at 16.4% versus 8.8 statewide. Our company provides entry-level, middle-income, and high-wage jobs in the community. Our mission is creating jobs and changing lives. We grow and develop leaders and talent, and we do that while providing exceptional service to our customers that include commercial and government entities. About a third of our employees carry security clearances to do the federal contracting work that we do. Over six years ago, we started the company and we made a promise that we, as we continued to grow, our success would translate directly back into the hands of the community. And I tell you all of this because we believe North Omaha is our next economy and one of our greatest assets for economic development and contribution to not only to our community but also our state. It is diverse. It is growing, and it is integral to Nebraska's overall success. We are making a $50 million development project investment in the heart of North Omaha, as Preston mentioned, at 24th and Lake Streets that includes new corporate headquarters for our company as well as affordable housing for rent and for ownership. We're anticipating 80 to 100 housing units, as well as mixed retail, food service, and daycare on premises, and community-facing spaces as well. The historic relevance of the location is not lost on us, nor is the opportunity that exists. We are using these plans as our guiding principles as we undertake this development. The plans serve to guide the development and make way for additional development, infrastructure, land availability, transportation, zoning, and permitting, that we cannot fully accomplish without these plans being approved. Our belief is in the promise of North Omaha so strong, and it is so strong, that we named our real estate company Forever North Real Estate. And I just want to add that if we continue to listen to our young leaders, who are often seen as the leaders of tomorrow, I actually believe are the leaders of today, we will go very far, very fast. And much of the work of these plans came from our current leaders, our current young leaders that will be speaking here today. There has been extensive stakeholder engagement and involvement, and it's time to move forward and, as they say, strike while the iron is hot. And we believe that the iron is really hot right now. The community is behind these plans, and it's time to move. And the ability and capacity to embark upon the development is happening right now in the community. The developments will be transformative and will serve as catalysts for additional, much-needed development in the future. These plans reflect agreement that it is time, and not only is it time, but there's also a way and a pathway in ensuring that the community's priorities are not only listened to but also maintained. This is about jobs. It is about homes, and it is about community building. Thank you for your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for your investment in North Omaha.
Happy to do it. Thank you.
Other proponents, please. Don't be shy. I know we have a lot here.
Good afternoon. My name is Dana Murray. I am the executive director of the Future North Omaha Music and Arts, 2510 North 24th Street. It's a beautiful day. I usually have a lot of symbolism in the words that I say. I will try to be brief today. I spent a lot of time and lived a lot of my adult life in New York City. I see the commonality between a lot of our underserved or our communities of color, knowing that when you speak about it being a black and white thing, whatever the problem, that is easily puts someone on a defense. I tend to speak about those things and a majority versus the minority. And the fact is, the minority usually draws the short end of the stick of progress. I'm going to tell you guys a story. When I lived in Harlem, I used to look out my back window and the apartment building in back, it was like a U shape, and people would throw the trash out the window down into the alley. After about three, four months, the trash would be about knee-high. Then the city would come and clean it up. Then people would throw the trash out the window again, and they would come and clean it up. This happened time after time. You go up to Spanish Harlem, Spanish Harlem was pretty clean. You had people out on their stoops sweeping the stoop up. It seemed brighter, yet you were in the same basic community. I say to myself, God, why are they so uncivilized and savage? As I got older, wiser, I asked myself, what would make a people have that little respect and lack of sense of ownership that they would throw trash out of their window? Because see, I've been all over the world, traveling as a musician, and what I've realized is people are way more the same than they are different wherever you go. Our communities are in a depressed state. That is a fact. Why would they not be unless no one knows anything about our history? So why would they not be depressed? So we are either going to instill things that are going to right that ship, or we're going to just go along and hope that it just works itself out. I'm not a political person. I'm a musician, right? I've done more talking about what I want to do in the last year of my life than I've ever done. I'm a doer. I like to get in the trenches and get stuff done. But for the sake of this, I would just like to say that most of what I see is people asking for favors. Can you please do this for me? Can you please do that for me? I'm not asking for any favors, zero favors. I'm asking you to do your jobs, right? I don't know how many of you saw the documentary on Tom Brady, but what was pointed to me was he said, I always hold my teammates accountable. I'm not asking you to overachieve, to try to go in a game, do anything special. We practice hard. Just do your job, right? No favors. I'd also like to say congratulations for being a part of this historic moment. This is special. It feels somehow different now, right? And you're welcome. What do you mean? You're welcome for all of these incredible blueprints that all these city leaders from North Omaha. There's so many bright, intelligent thinkers and doers that are presenting things that are going to be absolutely transformative to that community. And if North Omaha thrives, guess what? Omaha thrives. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents. Senator Chambers, welcome.
Members of the council, my name is Ernie Chambers. My address is 1825 Vinnie Street. I'm one block north of, one block east of this little development that they're talking about here today. But my community comprises all of the territory where Black people live. My blood is in that community. That community is in my blood. I will be 85 years old the 10th of July. Fifty of those years have been squandered in elective office, 46 in the legislature, more than anybody else, four on the learning community, which my legislation and my efforts helped to create. I could stand here and give a list of what are called accomplishments and achievements that would cause people to say, I didn't know that or that's not true. But if you have the kind of personality that I have, nothing that is done is of any value if the problems that were being addressed thereby continue to remain. Black people still have our vote diminished. Our political power that we should have as a result of people in office is not there. It's what they call de minimis, our presence but no power. I saw that as a young person because I did a lot of reading. I read white people's books. So I decided when I got into the legislature, I would learn the white people's rules and beat them at their own game, which without boasting and without being successfully challenged, I succeeded in doing to a remarkable degree. When I used to come before the city council, it was in an old building. This didn't even exist. I was in my late teens. There was a fellow named Jacob Berger who ruled the council and in effect the city with an iron hand. He was known as the speaker with a silver tongue. And as a youngster, I said on one occasion, it's nice to be a silver-tongued orator, but that orator needs to be careful that that silver tongue does not turn on him and cut his own throat. I even ran for that city council. The elections were at large, no chance to be elected, and I knew it. But it gave me an opportunity to talk and demonstrate that despite the ability that I had, I would never be elected as long as white people had to vote for me. So I got a bill through the legislature. It was vetoed four times. The fourth time, I overrode the governor's veto and required the elec- The fourth time, I overrode the governor's veto and required the election of the council by district. And without exception, I don't believe one of you who are on it now would be on this council if it were not by district. And white people resent what I say because I don't come with my head bowed, my feet shuffling, my thanking white people for everything, because substantially speaking, substantively speaking, nothing has changed for us from the time I was a small child at Lothrup School, which was almost all white, and they read a story called Little Black Sambo. I was a Black child in the room. Prior to the reading of that story, if a child stumbled, dropped a book, and they laughed, the teacher would cease everything and say, "We don't laugh at each other." I'm not gonna take all afternoon, perhaps, but I see the local constabulary has a representative to my right, and I can be escorted from the room, but I need not be escorted. Just tell me, leave. That's what I've been hearing all my life.
Well, I know you're used to the three-minute rules in the legislature, so we'll try to wrap it up a little bit, if that's okay with you.
I couldn't understand you.
I know you're used to the time limits in the state legislature, so we'll try and keep to a shorter timeline if possible, so we encourage you to wrap up the remarks as pertains to item number 13.
You said the time limit?
There are no time limits specifically, but I'm encouraging you to stay within that timeframe, so we can hear from everyone today.
Okay. And I knew that would happen, but I knew nobody would throw me out of here. And I don't come here that often. And you'll hear things from me you won't hear from anybody else. But this I must tell you, and I had to lead up to it, because there are people saying, "Don't teach critical race theory because it will make little white children feel they have to apologize for being white." Well, my parents taught me to respect all teachers because they would teach me things that I would not learn. But they've made a mistake because they didn't warn me that these people I was taught to respect would humiliate me, ridicule me, when I couldn't fight back and didn't know how to fight back. That story of Little Black Sambo, for those who may not know, was a caricature of Black people when they had the drawings. It was a child in garish clothing, a black face, a red big mouth, two eyes like sauces with dots on them. And when the picture was shown, the little white kids not only laughed, but they looked at me. The teacher, I was waiting to hear say, as she said about the little white children, "We don't laugh at each other." That was not said. So from the time I was a child, I knew that a difference existed. And now to get to the matter at hand, by the time the speculators have gotten their foothold, those who don't live in our community have been given benefits, then there is the formalization of what has been done so that those who planted their seeds can now reap the benefits. Whatever happens in that small bit of North Omaha affects every place where Black people live, as far as I'm concerned. My arm is a small percentage of my body, but if it was cut off, it would affect the whole. I want Black people who are going to shout "Hosanna" to pay close attention to the development in that area. Maple Street on the north, Clark Street or Franklin on the south, the highway on the west, and 20th or Florence Boulevard on the east. I've lived in that area all my life, a bicycle ride from where I was born. So I'm not gonna stand up here and condemn you for what you're doing, but I'm not going to praise you either. When you see land being cleared, and nobody in our community has the money or the wherewithal to clear it, when you see outsiders purchasing property that is beyond our power to purchase, that land is going to be held like a plantation, meaning that there will be those who don't live in that area who will control it, who will get the main benefit. But as with the story of Lazarus, then I'm going to stop. They will eat the crumbs that fell off the rich man's table. And some people think that the only dog in the Bible mentioned had a name, and the dog's name was "Moreover," because the Bible says, "Moreover," as far as Lazarus there. Moreover, the dogs licked his sores. I'm not a sore licker. I don't create sores. I do what I think ought to be done, and to the extent that I can be of assistance in achieving anything that will help my community or a substantial part of it, I will do it. Any person on this council, I don't care who you are, what your politics are, what your religion is, if you have a proposal that you want to see in North Omaha, any part of it, I will help you if it's of value. I will fight you if it's not. And I'm not going to degrade and demean those people who have done this little bit, which will be done. But what is being done shows how much is needed and how little of it is being done. I have no disrespect for any of the people on this council because you're gonna cast a vote today. My last point, there should be a member on whatever committee, council, or however it's designated, from the district where any development of this size and magnitude is to occur. So with reference to this item, the person who represents the second city council district ought to be a member and not just a toga, token. That person should be listened to and heeded, and I would advise that person to maintain contact with the community. And I want to let all the people on the council know, you're not going to have to sit through these talks from me because I will not be coming down here because I don't want to waste my time or yours.
Thank you. Next proponent, please. We need to refrain from applause, please, in the audience.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf and support of the Forever North and 24th Lake redevelopment plans, and I want to thank the city planning department for all their hard work and for all those individuals who already spoke about the support for this program. My name is Ralph Kleinsmith. I serve on the North 24th Street BID as secretary on behalf of Logier Corporation, where I have worked for over 25 years at, and many of those years and countless hours on 24th and Sailor at our West Omaha plant. It's kind of ironic how we call it West Omaha, but that gives you an idea how long we've been in North Omaha. That was our West Plant operation built across the street from our East Plant operation. Our engineers were never very creative.
And your address, just for the record?
I apologize. The exact address of West Plant is 4224 North 22nd Street. Logier has been an avid supporter of the North Omaha community for more than 66 years. A brief history of the company's involvement in the community demonstrates our roots are deep in North Omaha. The company was established in 1956 with an office and manufacturing plant on North 21st Street. That was our East Plant operation. In 1970, with the support from the North Omaha community, Logier expanded our manufacturing operations by adding over 200,000 square feet across the street, which is now our West Plant, North 22nd Street operation. Today, that position and that facility provides jobs, good-paying jobs, for over 200 employees from the community. The company again expanded in 1976 with the help of our North Omaha community. We added three facilities of very high-paying jobs, good-paying jobs, livable wage jobs on 6336 Pershing Drive. We put in facilities that equaled over 1.2 million square feet and 1,000 employees. These jobs provide the community starting wages of $45,000 a year up to an average of, depending on what skilled position it is, $65,000 to $85,000 a year. So these are very good-paying jobs that we can offer this community. And we need this community, because I can assure you and I stand here today stating a fact that Logier could not have become the nation's leading manufacturer of retail display shelving without the support of the North Omaha community. Today, Logier, like all businesses, but especially those in the North Omaha community, are faced with continued labor shortages and are challenged with hiring, recruiting, and retaining employees. For the past 60 years, we've watched a deterioration of the North Omaha community. The continued loss of affordable housing, reduced businesses, reduction of good-paying jobs have plagued this community. This needs to stop. The opportunity with the Forever North and 24th, excuse me, for Forever North and 24th Lake redevelopment plans has the opportunity to change this narrative. These plans begin to address the lack of housing for seniors and the lack of new family homes for those that wish to move back into the community. These plans will help address safe, affordable housing for all families. The multimodal transportation system will also improve transportation for those individuals wishing to have transportation back and forth from the jobs that are brought into this community. These plans and funds would transform the northern part of our city. And we know investments like these, they work. We've seen it time and time again. We've seen it Blackstone, Midtown, Downtown, Benson Exarban. These plans work. So I implore you to look at this plan to implement in the northern community, North Omaha. The investment back into our community is long overdue, and would yield many benefits for the entire city of Omaha and the metropolitan area. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next proponent, please.
Hi, my name is David Hawkins. I'm a part of the team at Noma, 2510 Lake Street. I'm also speaking on behalf of myself, 2703 North 62nd Street. I'm a young professional musician here in Omaha, Nebraska, and music has always been a huge part of my life. I began drumming on pots and pans when I was two years old. I remember playing in drill teams around North Omaha and playing at church. But it wasn't until I was probably 16 years old that I was afforded the opportunities and resources that I needed to develop as a musician, and that was outside of my community growing up off of 40th and Ames. I had to go to Burke High School, which happened by chance. I'm glad it happened, but it happened by chance. And it was there that I met people that shared the same passions as I did, that gave me resources, that gave me mentorship, that opened my horizons to a lot of different things, not only in music, but also in life. It was a catalyst for the kind of person that I wanted to be. And it wasn't until that time that I realized that I could be it, that I could be a professional musician, that drumming was even something that I could do for a living. I had never met anybody in my life that made a living playing drums, but I did that. And I saw so many other things in this endeavor that I could do. And I realized a passion, but I also realized a dream that I didn't know I had. Beyond that, I realized I could do it. But none of that happened where I lived. None of that was a perspective that I was able to see walking outside or hanging out with my friends or doing something down the street or even going to my community centers. It was sports, it was basketball, it was church, good things, but that was it. And even now, as a young professional, I'm in a position where I have to look at moving elsewhere and going to New York, going to Chicago, to develop my fullest potential as a musician. And for a city with as much musical depth and history and roots as Omaha, that shouldn't be the case. That's something I wish that I would have had when I was two to 16, that I could have dove into more and spent more time enjoying what I enjoy every day now. And it's something that I'm still in search of now. It's something that I wish that, you know, my friends that made other choices, that had some of the same inclinations that I did, but they never got to see those perspectives, so they chose to do other things. And every day, I run into somebody that, you know, we were beating on tables together, we were making up songs on the playground, but they're doing something that is never going to take them outside of where they are or are going down here, or I can't talk to them because they're dead or they're in jail. And that really could have been me. I was at a crossroads where my parents told me that, that's part of why I went to Burke. We won't say by chance. My parents took me out of the environment that I was in because they had to. Because they had to do that to show me and put me in a position to realize the stuff that I was supposed to be. That shouldn't have to happen. For me, it was music, so that's all that I can speak to. But there are things that are happening in North Omaha that would greatly benefit from these plans, and I'm a strong proponent of the 24th Lake Street Redevelopment Act as well as Forever North. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Other proponents, please.
I promise I'll be brief. I tend to be long-winded, so definitely will be brief. My name is Mitch Strong. I'm the Neighborhood Revitalization Manager at Habitat for Humanity, 1701 North 24th. I'm originally from New York, New York City, and I came out here to Lincoln for school a long, long time ago, 1992. And something happened to me there that Ernie Chambers actually helped me out with, made regional news, national news. And I did not like Nebraska after that. But moving back to Nebraska and coming back to Omaha, you know, I'm so proud to be here. And I call Nebraska Omaha my home. I've done a lot over the past couple of years for people of Omaha, for people that are coming in from Omaha, refugees from around the world. And I want you to know, especially in North Omaha, that there's so much untapped talent there. Untapped talent that will benefit not only North Omaha, but the whole city of Omaha, which a lot of people don't realize. However, if you have underdeveloped areas, it's not gonna help anyone, especially the people that live in that area. You know, it doesn't matter where that is. If you have generational, underdeveloped areas in West Omaha, North Omaha, South Omaha, there's gonna be problems. And when you have problems like that, you're not gonna tap into that talent, you know, the people that come from those areas, so much talent. And I think right now is a perfect time to really see what Omaha can do on a national level, on an international level. And it takes just one little thing, and it's developing areas that you can really help the people in, and those people will help themselves, and they will help Omaha. So, again, I said I was gonna be brief, and normally I'm not like that, but that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Maroney, welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Maroney. I'm the president of the Omaha Economic Development Corporation at 2221 North 24th Street, and I will also be brief. I've been, I'm a product of Omaha, actually, I'm a product of North Omaha, been there all my life. All my adult life, I've spent working in North Omaha. I've been aware of and involved in many of those plans that have come and gone, and I'd like to say that the biggest challenge has always been to those plans. There's never been the will or the resources to implement those plans. We have an opportunity here now if we pass this plan, and I don't think there's been a bad plan. But like I said, the will to see those plans through and the resources to make it happen just was not there, it was lacking. I think the Forever North study and the redevelopment plan that's with it is another step in the right direction, but it'll only be meaningful if we're intentional and actually provide the will and the resources to make it sure that it's implemented. And I'm in support of both the Forever North study and the redevelopment plan that's before you.
Thank you. Next proponent, please. And to give me a sense, how many more proponents do we have that are gonna speak? Couple more? Okay. Couple more? Okay.
Luis Jimenez, Twenty-Seven Oh Nine Dewey Avenue. Is the plan available? I was trying to use my phone, but I couldn't access the Forever North Plan. Anyway, I agree with the comments that that was community engagement. One particular item was that they would do a double session or have multiple hours of availability with the city personnel so that people can attend and ask questions. So I thought that was, that was good. I also want to support the amendment. I don't know if you guys are going to, are going to move for it, but there's two amendments, and I did read it. And I think that moving from here, if you're only going to listen to the Business Improvement District, as it's listed here on the amendments, younger generations and emerging leaders, arts, history, and cultural stakeholders along North Twenty-Fourth Street, property owners and renters, technical staff from the city MAPPA and Metro Transit, elected and appointed officials, representatives from community groups and organizations along North Twenty-Fourth Street, such as the Empowerment Network and North Omaha Neighborhood Alliance, Nona, and other community groups and organizations approved by the BID and members of the FNIC. I think that would populate the committee well, because I did attend the development of the plan a few years ago, and these are familiar faces. The point about having the community involved in the, I don't know, what's the next step, the execution, I think that's a very good point, and I think the amendment to create the committee and then have the council member, even have the power to approve all appointees to the committee, I think that'd be some good oversight. I support that. I look forward to further development in the area because it's needed. There's, we talk about vacant lots, and that's true. You don't have to go far in the area to see a vacant lot, and, you know, that's something that is going to take money to happen, to get development there. So my last point would be about art. I saw the concepts on page forty-six and forty-seven, and I don't know if the new structures that would be proposed in this particular area represent, like incorporating artistic components into the development. So I think that's going to be very important. Even the commercial developers and all the property owners of the buildings should focus on working with local artists to put up their art and their premises and property. And yeah, overall, I thought it was a good process. I hope that there's more people that get involved and that there was a lot of education happening during this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents, please. Mr. Barney, come on down. And we have one proponent by Zoom after this, too.
Good afternoon, Council, Willie Barney. Played different roles, but first of all, with the Empowerment Network, Twenty-Four Oh One Lake Street, and then my wife and I also own two businesses now at the historic District Twenty-Fourth and Lake Revive Center and the Carver Legacy Center. I just wanted to stand and, first of all, always believe in giving honor where honor is due. As Senator Chambers was speaking, made me think about his legislation to have district elections at the city, county, state level, and the impact that that's made on the city to have representation. So we want to recognize that. We just heard a couple of speakers ago from Michael Maroney. Working alongside Michael for the last fifteen years, I've seen what he's put in and others have put into this work. If you look at Twenty-Fourth Street, even though we know that there's more work that needs to be done, but if you start at Twenty-Fourth and Coming, and you look at the McDonald's, and you look at CHI, and you look at the learning community, and you look at the Omaha Star Building, and you look at Fairview Village, and you look at where the Union is, and you look at many of the things that have happened along Twenty-Fourth Street to create the catalyst movement for where we are now, a lot of that was really done with the hands of Michael Maroney, his team. And so I just really want to, first of all, honor his work and the legacy he continues to build along Twenty-Fourth Street. I also want to recognize a partner that's been along with us for the last fifteen years, Vicky Quates Ferris, the work and time that she's put in. We were a part of one of those plans ten years ago, the North Omaha Village Plan, and I want to recognize Manny and his team, the fact that they recognized that that plan, that they were building on it with the Forever North Study. We had some conversations just in the last few days. I was down in Lincoln, and as Mr. Maroney said, one of the key critical components of this whole thing is, once the plan is there, how is it implemented? How are the funds aligned? So I'm excited to see that this is really an acceleration moment. When we worked together ten years ago to get the village plan to a point where it was approved unanimously by the city council, one of the goals was to be a catalyst in anticipating that the eight hundred-plus people that helped build and develop that plan would be a catalyst to the next plan, but that plan would be the implementation phase. And so there's been a lot of work done in between the last ten years. I don't think people realize that the Union didn't exist at Twenty-Fourth and Lake, the Fairview Village didn't exist, the learning community didn't exist. So now, with the work of Manny, Spark, OEDC, Carmen, the Carnation Ballroom, and many of those components that are moving into place, and to hear Lozier, to hear the work that CHI is doing, now jobs are coming back into the community, this is really that moment that we've all been working towards. And I just want to, again, echo the comments from Mr. Maroney, that this is the time also, once this plan, and we're hopeful that it will be approved unanimously. There's many things that are on the table right now, projects that are on the table that this plan will help accelerate, but we will also be back collectively seeking the level of investment from the city, county, and state to accelerate this progress, because now is the time, and I've said many times standing at this podium, and someone said it earlier today, that when North Omaha wins and South Omaha wins, this whole city wins. We, the other piece is, there's an equity study that was done by MAPPA, and it was reinforced by Equity, the policy link. It says that four billion dollars, and this is going back five years ago, but four billion dollars of economic activity will be added to this region when North and South Omaha reach equity with the rest of the city. If that was five years ago, I would imagine it's probably six billion dollars that would be added to the economy when North and South Omaha receive the level of investment. So I just want to say thank you, a prayerful that'll be the unanimous vote today of both plans, and we stand in support of an implementation team that will take this forward. So thank you so much for your time, and want to thank the Forever North Implementation Group that will be formed beyond this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks for your work, too. Other proponents in the audience. Seán, and I want to go to the proponent on Zoom, Ms. Krieger. You're recognized. We'll get you off mute here in a second. Here we go. Try that.
Thank you, President Vesterson, Jennifer Krieger, Greater Omaha Chamber, Eight Oh Eight Conagra Drive, Suite Four Hundred Six Eight One Oh Two. I have a short letter from David Brown. Dear President Vesterson and members of the council, the Greater Omaha Chamber is pleased to offer this letter in support of the city of Omaha's Forever North Housing and Multimodal Transportation Strategy. In two thousand seventeen, we engaged our members to envision what it will take to ensure our region's economic strength into the future. The resultant Greater Omaha Twenty-Forty Initiative focuses on people, place, and prosperity and suggests a high-quality built environment is essential to attracting talent and supporting business growth. More recently, we partnered with Metro Transit, the Metropolitan Area Planning Agency, and cross-sector group of civic leaders called Metro Smart Cities to develop a new regional transportation strategy, Connect Go. The economic benefit of building walkable neighborhoods connected by diverse transportation options is a foundational element of that initiative. The city of Omaha's Forever North Strategy is well-positioned to catalyze inclusive economic growth in a part of our city that has experienced significant disinvestment over the past several decades. We look forward to seeing the results of its implementation. Regards, David G. Brown, President and CEO. Thanks.
Thank you. Well, now move to opponents. Any opponents that want to speak today?
Hello, my name is Gwen Easter. I live at Twenty-Eight Ninety-Five Benny Street in Omaha, in North Omaha. I grew up in North Omaha. I decided to come down here and speak because I'm not going to say that I'm against this plan, but what I'm against is how all these plans have affected my life and other people's life. Everyone wants to talk about the plan that they put together ten years ago. Well, that plan hurt my business, my organization, my livelihood. I had two daycares, two daycares. I still have one housed in the same place. I had a little small T-shirt and little store that I turned my garage into a nice little store that I worked hard for. I started my organization and my daycare in nineteen ninety-nine, and my day, excuse me, my organization in nineteen ninety-nine, and my daycare in two thousand. I was an AmeriCorps Vista volunteer before then, tutoring kids in Omaha Public Schools System. So I created a housing program, a tutoring program for kids. I had an adult GED ESL program. I've done over fifteen, fifteen Safe Night Youth Rallies since starting my organization. I started out in a small little house in North Omaha, and I worked my way to buy, purchase my property on Thursday and Benny. I had teachers, volunteers, staff. I tutored kids who was dyslexic. I tutored adults who were dyslexic. I had teachers doing the same thing, helping. A work experience program, helping parents, worked with DHS and many, many organizations, Lutheran Family, Heartland Family Services, Lutheran, all these different organizations sending their clients to my programs when there were no one helping families and children in my community, in my area. And then here we go. Here comes people to come in my community, start the learning community, and other programs, duplicated my programs and services, pushed out my daycare business, and want to act like my organization and daycare is irrelevant. The financial hardship that I have gone through, I almost lost my home and my property because of people's development, because of people's plan, that is still today affecting my life. The disrespect that I have had to happen to me. Let's talk about also the over two hundred private childcare business owners who worked just as hard as I did for my organization and my daycare and served this community with all my heart. Everybody want to be proud about what they've done to accomplish certain things at the price of other people suffering. There are people who lost their homes, their businesses, when all we tried to do was help people. I supported those that stood up here, a lot of them that stood up here and talked about all of what they've done. When I was that young entrepreneur, I went to Mr. Maroney's business program. They saw me work hard to get my business and my daycare going and my organization that I freely did. I'm going to speak for the voices that don't have a voice, the low-income families who are being pushed out of our community. We can say genification, you know, we don't want to be gentified out of our community. I almost lost everything because of other people's plan for our community, people who don't even live there, didn't grow up there, don't know the struggle that we went through, the lack of disrespect that we have had all these years. Of course, we want things to be developed in our community. We want jobs, and we want companies, and we want all of those things that every other organization, every other district has in their community, but we don't want to be pushed out of our community. People duplicate my programs, and then want to act like liars who want to sit up there and act like they've just been working hard, paving the way, doing things when they know they lying. I supported a lot of people in this community, a lot of organizations. I got behind their plan, not even realizing they were coming to take my business away from me, lose my home. I forgave them people, I really did. I had to do a lot of soul searching, a lot of praying, and ask God to help me to forgive these people, because all I really tried to do was help people in my community, because I understood what the problems was in my community, because I lived, I grew up there. So I'm saying to you all, while y'all putting y'all plan together, what about the people who live there? What about the people that's being displaced? Affordable housing? Why is it that we can't define affordable housing? Because that property that's up on Thirty First Street that everybody's so proud of, it's not affordable for everybody. Somebody making nine or ten dollars an hour doesn't have a voucher from the Omaha Public Housing, they can't afford to live there. One of my programs that I made sure that I kept was my housing program that I've had for twenty-three years, and I get calls every day from people that call 211. A lot of families are struggling, can't pay their bills. Some of these people are living in their houses, living on their family couches or friends, and at any moment in any day, they can be put out of their homes. But we want to talk about affordable housing. These apartments are not affordable. Where's in the plan that's going to guarantee that we're going to get to stay in our community? Where's the plan that's going to guarantee that those families that had to move out? And what about our daycare businesses that we're having to compete with free, free daycare down the street that they so proud of? A lot of these, it's not even teaching our children, want to push sexual things upon our kids and all kind of stuff. I want to know, what plan do you all have to make sure that we, as a community, stay in our community? Because what I'm looking at is a lot of people moving in and a whole bunch of us moving out. I'm not against development, and I'm not even against the hard labor that these people have worked for, but you know what? Remember us, too. Remember those that was forerunners who came, came before all of y'all, before you came over here and duplicated our programs and our services. Every time I turn them around, we all getting downplayed every time. We got to prove ourselves. We got to prove ourselves to the legislature. We got to prove ourselves. We worked hard. I worked hard for everything that I have, and I'm still going through. I'm still dealing with things because of people's plans. You talk about y'all coming and talking to the community when mostly you're talking to your little partnerships. You're not thinking about the cost of everything. They didn't care, they didn't care that we was losing our businesses, downplaying other people's businesses. The childcare industry, that's one business that we strived in. We, black people was dominating in, and they had to come and try to take that away, to put up these centers, who's sitting up here researching our children. Nobody's saying nothing. And don't talk to me about the white man, because black people helped push my business out. I worked hard for everything.
Ms. Easter, I'm going to have you make sure addressing us, and could you summarize your comments, please? We've had others to get to, too, and councilmember lights on.
I'm done. All I want to say is this, before y'all pass this plan, I would like y'all to think about those low-income families that need affordable, real affordable houses. I want y'all to think about the struggle and the work. I would like to get back to working with my families and my children like I was, but I got to go up here and come down here and do all this stuff, while I try to figure out how to get kids back in my business because of people's plan. So think about the low-income families and people who have a voice, because they have a voice, too. They residents of this community, too. So think about the low income families and people who have a voice because they have a voice too. They residents of this community too.
Thank you. Any other opponents that want to speak today? CNN Public Hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Wow, what an exciting day. Such beautiful experiences that have been told historical significance to 24th Street has been echoed by many testimonies that have come up today at the mic to share their joy, their excitement about looking at these two strategies or two proposals that we're looking at, one being the 24th Street Development Plan and the other one, the Forever North Strategic, or Strategy. Just want to say again, I thank everyone for coming today. And, and sharing unity and, and working together collectively to look at where we're going to be going in the next 10 years. We all have concerns about displacement. We all have concerns about the African-American history and culture being lost. Many of us are concerned that it will take 10 years for reliable public transportation to occur going north to south. But the overall, the overreaching strategy here is very exciting. A lot of thought was given to it. I would like to thank Manny for working on this in 2019 and present day. I would also like to thank City Planning for being thoughtful and engaging in this. And yes, you guys have done improvements in terms of public outreach, particularly toward this strategy. And we kind of got a little bit out of whack here today. We do have two amendments that was, should have been put before us before we went into the, to the two, one says resolution, one says ordinance. Okay. Before we get into that, and that was an amendment C. And that would be to allow your city representative to be a part of this steering committee. Which is also called the Implementation Committee. Can you hear me? Oh, okay, so again, we kind of got out of, out of alignment. The first thing we want to talk about is the Amendment A or Amendment C. Which would allow me to be a part of the Steering Committee. I would also like to echo on the fact that that's, this is kind of like out of order because a city representative really shouldn't have to ask to be a part of a committee. That should just be automatic. But for some reason, we decided to do this to provide unity. And not only the city saying, hey, it's time for a new day, time for North Omaha to have its day, for a significant change in North Omaha. It wanted, we wanted to put these two amendments forth to you to unify the community. And get the City of Omaha behind that support by saying, hey, we're going to have the representative there. And then the other section would be that that representative would also pick who would be a part of that committee. The long history that we have in, in North Omaha in District 2. We are unable to, you know, just haphazardly implement these plans. Like Michael Maroney said, there has been a lot of development plans placed forth in North Omaha. And it is very important that the implementation of this plan is done intentionally. We would want that plan to be well thought out. We would want participation in the community to bring this forth. So my first motion would be on number C would be to, again, signify unity in the community by assuring my participation into the Implementation Committee and being a member there. So I move that we do that.
I'll second the motion to approve 13C. Are you, are your remarks complete for now?
Yes.
By seconding the motion, I'll just add that I'm also quite encouraged by all the testimony here today and all the partnerships that are represented here today. Councilmember Johnson and I participated on the State of North Omaha call about three weeks ago with over 400 people involved in that discussion, most of whom are here, or lots of whom are here. And I was also really encouraged by the opportunity and the moment and the enthusiasm and the, and the unified voices on that call to do what we're talking about doing today. As well as supporting the many private projects represented by this Forever North Transportation, Transportation Strategy and Multimodal Transportation Strategy, but also the 24th and Lake Redevelopment Plan that we'll talk about here next. And the huge opportunity has Mr. Barney recognized in our support for legislation on Lincoln right now, as recently as yesterday. Bills 1024 and 1025 and also 1238 to bring what could be up to $450 million worth of funds to help implement many aspects of these strategies. A portion of which, as Mr. Maroney has acknowledged, has been missing in the past in previous studies to help actually get them done. And I think this is a huge opportunity for our community to have that happen. I want to recognize my, my fellow musicians in the room. Great to have you both here. I think it may be your first time testifying before the City Council. So it's great to have your participation in this plan, but also here today. And I think with Mr. Murray that said, if, if North Omaha prospers, all of Omaha prospers, and that's true. And if North Omaha doesn't prosper, Omaha doesn't prosper either. It's one and the same. And we need to do a better job of realizing that. And I think that's what we're talking about here today. And can accomplish by taking some steps here today and with these, all the rest of these opportunities that are before us. So that's why I'm supporting item number 13 today, and I will support the amendment, item 13C. That ensures the council member from, from District 2 is involved in what's conceived of being the Implementation Committee. The document recognizes those that have worked on this, on this effort for quite some time, that are called the Stakeholder Committee. And contemplates that Stakeholder Committee becoming and transforming into an Implementation Committee that would then include the council member from this district, which I think is appropriate. With that, no further lights on the amendment. There's a motion to move and, and Mr. Harding, your light on? Or do you want to wait till after that?
Make sure it was clear what the amendment was.
Okay. Amendment 13C would add the council, the council member from District 2, to what becomes the Forever North Implementation Committee within the document observed in number 13.
Okay.
Okay.
I, just for note too, and I, and I'll be supportive of that too, but I, I want to note that in the Forever North report, that it did include elected officials or it suggested that elected and appointed officials be on that committee as well too, or that. Just for the record.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, did you wish to be recognized?
Um, no.
Okay. Motion, a second to approve 13C, the amendment. Roll call.
Palermo. Rowe. Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
And Ms. Johnson, are you recognized? Would you like, is your light on? Okay.
I'm going to go ahead and remove the amendment number D from this.
Okay. And so would you like to move 13 as amended?
Yes.
I'll second that. No further lights. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding. Johnson.
Yes.
Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 12, a resolution to approve the 24th and Lake Redevelopment Plan located in an area generally bound by Maple Street on the north, Franklin and Clark Streets on the south, 20th Street on the east, and Highway 75 on the west. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 12 is today. Proponents, please. Planning Department, come on down.
Good afternoon, Kelly Johnston Dorsey, City Planning Department. So I think it's as obvious as we've heard in previous testimony that over the past few years, we've heard and become aware of a growing number of proposed and planned projects in the areas of 24th and Lake. And there's been a call for the city's assistance with those, with some of these redevelopment projects. The Planning Department evaluated existing plans and determined that a new redevelopment plan was needed to address current and redevelopment needs. Mainly the transfer of city-owned property. With a redevelopment plan, Nebraska statute grants the city authority to transfer properties at fair value. Fair value may be less than the appraised value depending on the project, the needs of the project sponsor and other factors. The City of Omaha owns 59 properties within the redevelopment plan area. The redevelopment plan allows the transfer of city-owned property at fair market value. This resolution would approve the redevelopment plan only. Any subsequent transfer of city property will come to you as separate cases. This redevelopment plan also allows the use of eminent domain by the city. It is not planned, but I only mention it to be transparent. In August, the Planning Department began meeting with property owners, active and potential developers, developers to better understand potential development. Through these meetings, we identified additional partners to meet with. On September 2nd, the Planning Department hosted a Zoom meeting to discuss the redevelopment plan. To notify residents of the meetings, we sent 307 mailings and 315 emails. We posted and shared a Facebook event, shared a digital flyer and posted to Nextdoor. 14 active and potential developers presented their projects during the Zoom meeting. 85 people registered to attend the Zoom meeting. The meeting was recorded, posted online and has been viewed 217 times on YouTube and 71 times on Facebook. Staff held office hours at the Fabric Lab on North 24th Street on two separate days totaling seven hours. There were five attendees. In October, Councilwoman Johnson hosted two public meetings to discuss the redevelopment plan. The first was attended by the Planning Director and Assistant Director. While speaking with property owners, active and potential developers, their quest was made to extend the southern boundary to include city-owned property as far south as Decatur Street. Understanding the potential benefit to the 17 city-owned properties between the old boundary and the proposed boundary, the redevelopment plan was reworked to extend the boundary to Franklin and Clark. On December 9th, all property owners and residents were mailed a letter in the extended boundary informing them of the plan, where to read it, office hours, times and locations, and how to get in touch and ask questions or leave comments. Similar letters were sent to all property owners and residents within, within the Forever North boundary, which is larger. A total of 2,445 letters were mailed. In addition, advertisements were provided on Facebook and in Nextdoor on December 9th and in the Omaha Star, December 10th. 389 emails were sent on December 11th. Four more office hours were held totaling 14 hours, 15 people attended. 394 emails were sent notifying residents and stakeholders of this hearing. Posts were made to Facebook and Nextdoor and another ad ran in the Omaha Star. During this engagement with the community, we received no objections or concerns regarding the plan or boundary extension. The redevelopment plan was created in anticipation and support of community-driven development and investments near the intersection of 24th and Lake Streets. As a redevelopment plan, this plan focuses on potential redevelopment in the area, which was guided by and is consistent with Forever North. Forever North was created by the community with extensive community involvement. Approving this redevelopment plan is a step in implementing Forever North. No city funds are committed with this redevelopment plan, and this redevelopment plan does not approve any projects. Approval of development projects will happen separately from this approval. This redevelopment plan was structured to follow Nebraska Community Development Law and it provides tools and resources the city can bring to bear to support private and nonprofit redevelopment in this corridor. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents on number 12.
Good afternoon, President Festerson and City Councilmembers. I'm normally not speaking on topics like this, but my testimony will give emphasis to some of the statements made by Kelly and make a few other points. As a longtime Planning Department employee, starting in the Community Development Division, I learned of and witnessed many revitalization, revitalization efforts the city engaged in to promote economic development. Also, as a native of North Omaha and as a resident of this community, I have witnessed progress in the community that lets me know that decades of revitalization efforts by the city and many different community partners have caught momentum and are finally reaching a critical mass of redevelopment activity. I've also observed the overwhelming number of city-owned properties that existed in Northeast Omaha. This North 24th Street Redevelopment Plan is part of the implementation of the Forever North, as, as you've heard, and a great example of the city's role in helping to stimulate revitalization at a completely new level. The city's ownership has created a stumbling block, as you've heard from others, for the private sector to purchase property at reasonable prices and then redevelop in a manner that was feasible or economical. The city is working toward getting out of the business of owning property in North Omaha. And I believe that's what this North Omaha community has been applauding and wanting. The purpose of this North 24th Street Redevelopment Plan is to allow the City of Omaha using the Community Development Law to transfer and sell city-owned property to potential buyers at fair market value, as Kelly said. And in this case, many of the potential buyers are people who look like the community. This means that the city could sell city-owned property to potential buyers for less than the fair market value if it chooses to do so. This is a very important benefit to those in the community who are interested and able to purchase these properties. Without this redevelopment plan, the city would, could sell the city-owned properties for the appraised value, which could be much higher than the fair market value under the Community Development Law. This would not benefit many of the community, many from the community who have expressed interest in purchasing city-owned property for the purposes of redevelopment. Because of strong interest from the private sector, particularly members of the community, revitalization in this part of North Omaha is taking place in a manner not witnessed in many of our lifetimes. The strong interest, the proposed projects and private dollars attracted to the area, particularly at the two of the corners of the intersection of North 24th Street and Lake Streets, namely one, Noma, North Omaha Music and Arts, and the North End Tele Services proposed project. Our catalytic redevelopment activities, the City of Omaha has been striving to achieve for decades. This is economic development. You will hear from several others of the proposed project owners and other representatives leading this transformation that our city is about to witness. The plan does not authorize any funding from, excuse me, does not authorize any funding for proposed projects. The funding of many of the proposed projects referenced in the plan is a completely separate process from this plan. Any proposed project owners that seek funding assistance from the city will follow a completely separate process, which comes with its own set of public hearings. TIF has been mentioned as a tool to assist with a few redevelopment projects. However, no applications for those proposed projects have been received. And I wanted to make that clear because I know some people are thinking it's an automatic and it's not, and there's a whole separate process yet to come. Once TIF applications are submitted, vetted by the Economic Development Staff, the TIF Committee, the Planning Board, those applications in the redevelopment project plans will make make their way to the City Council. So with that, I thank you for your time and consideration, and I hope you will support the approval of this redevelopment plan.
Thank you. Other proponents on number 12.
Name, Manny Manuel Cook, Spark, 2514 North 24th Street. It is short and simple. It's time to do the work, and I support this plan. Thank you.
We'll give the clerk here just one minute. There's something she needs to adjust on the podium there? All right, thank you. Next proponent, please.
Hello, me again, Dana Murray, North Omaha Music and Arts, 2510 or 24th Street. I do a lot of talking about my life in New York because it's actually fascinating to me to see sort of the difference between revitalization versus gentrification. Another story, shorter though. I used to live in Bed-Stuy, Brooklyn, and I remember as a young jazz musician, there were these old brownstones in the neighborhood, dilapidated, some condemned, and they were offering, people in the neighborhood, "You can buy this property maybe for like $6,000 to $8,000." The city will give you another, I think it was $200,000, but you had to live there for, I think it was eight years. Of course, our generation, "I don't want that old, you kidding me? Are you trying to fool me?" Fast forward 10 years, those same brownstones had come in, been developed, and were now worth 1.5 million. If only I knew then. So it's fascinating to see the process now, and it's also incredible that so many from the community are involved because that was somehow different in New York. I think what does make Omaha unique is that it is a much easier road to get us to prosperity than any other place underserved community in the country, and that's not opinion, hyperbole, conjecture. That's a case study of my own life. So that's just a side note. So this is an awesome process. Art and music education. I find myself speaking for the youth often. Obviously, I'm for all of these agendas, but most of these agendas seem to always revolve around the adults, right? And because I'm a results-driven person, I tend to look at what went into creating something. We have to be able to look at where we failed our young people. I talk a lot about North Omaha and history of music and my own experiences. I was probably one of the last group of kids that got to play with Preston Senior at the showcase, but there was nothing else there, nor was there really a spirit of doing everything that could be done to make sure that the lineage of that music was going to carry on. So here we are, and now there's nothing on North 24th Street that represents music and culture, and again, in my estimation, at the level that the predecessors would have hoped it would be. Noma is not only a music school, will be, but it is a place where kids will learn how to become critical thinkers. Again, just like me and music, and there was not much lineage. If there's not much lineage to young people, period, then where are our future leaders, right? I think if we can give more time, and listen, there's a reason for that, right? Our communities of color haven't been afforded the luxury of investment. A lot of the sort of investment that a lot of other communities that are more fiscally fortunate are able to have. So there's a reason for all that, right? Nonetheless, here we are. We have got to invest in our young people if we want to see real progress because all this that we're talking about, if it's only for this generation, only for the adults, then it's not really going to benefit those that are coming up really, really fast. So North Omaha Music and Arts and the North 24th Street redevelopment is going to ensure, in my estimation, that we give our kids more tools and more creative outlets to be successful, whatever they choose. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Quates Ferris, welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Vicki Quates Ferris. I am with the Empowerment Network, 2401 Lake Street, and I wasn't really going to come up here and say anything. I was kind of like one of those quiet supporters, but I really think that it's important that, and I do echo everything that everyone has said, but one of the things that I really want to put in perspective is, yes, the investment is definitely going to pay off, not just for North Omaha, but for the city of Omaha. But I want to let you know that, just to give you an example, in terms of what this development will mean, is when, say, for instance, during Native Omaha Days, we have thousands of people that come in to the city. They enjoy themselves for a week, but there's a tour that's called Stroll Down Memory Lane, and people have an opportunity to be on a bus, actually, it's Ollie the Trolley, but they have the opportunity to really just kind of think about and remember what 24th Street was at that time, and they get a kick out of it. I mean, they really enjoy looking at the different buildings and pointing out, "Yeah, we used to do this at the Jewel Building," or, "Yes, we used to enjoy ourselves at this building." But each year, when we do that tour, there's always something new that they can look forward to. And I always say during that tour, "Well, when you come back in two years, this is going to be happening," or, "This is what you can look forward to." So we had Native Omaha Days last year. If you could imagine, every two years, when they come back and they see the development and the excitement and the amenities that are along 24th Street, they're almost at the point where they want to move back. So I say all of that to let you know that I really appreciate all of those who have a project along North 24th Street. I applaud the investment that has been made because, yes, there have been a number of plans. Some have had few dollars, but this is a plan that continues on with, it's just another layer, and I really want to make it clear that this is not just for North Omaha, although North Omaha will benefit, but we have to make sure, what's in it for me? What's in it for you? We're trying to get talent into Omaha, but we want to get talent, and we want to get the workforce going in North Omaha. We have these projects. So I say, if you want to leave a legacy for you and for the next generation, let it be stated and let it be known and put it on record that you supported this plan. And if you can imagine for us to be able to say, "Yes, this is the council that said, 'Yes, we can.'" It's not just North Omaha, but it's all of us. So when we win, you win, and I am excited for the next tour that will come along for Native Omaha Days, but not even just in two years. I'm thinking about now because, again, there's been development that's happened. I don't want this to be looked upon as, "This is a beginning. This is building on what's already been taking place in North Omaha." This is just adding to, and I really appreciate all of you taking the time to listen to us because, as you can see, we are unified. We want this to be moving forward, and I am excited, as a young girl who used to buy these hoop earrings on 24th Street, and I love those earrings too, but to be able to bring other folks down there, to be able to shop, and I applaud, and I got to say this, those businesses that have been down there during the high times and the low times, and then now we're back up on that peak. So you've got like Styles of Evolution, you've got like LaFlore, they've been through it, but can you imagine the excitement that they have of what's to come? So I appreciate the opportunity just to be able to share and put into perspective what this redevelopment plan means, and I'm excited to be a part of it, and I'm excited about what's to come. So thank you.
Thank you. Next proponent. It's hard to follow that one, huh? Okay, Louise, you're up.
Louise Jimenez, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I'm sorry, I thought I shut off my phone. I do want to share with you guys some of this, the map of the redevelopment area. I can't. It doesn't, can't really see it very well. There's the glare. But if you look at the redevelopment area, right away, one of the things that you notice is the vacant lots around, up 24th Street. In this area, I met Counselor Johnson in one of the forums, civic forums, that they were hosting while the Planning Department was engaging the community, and I think this is a failure of city planning, the way that what's there, you can't blame the community always. This is a failure of the city, and the being able to convey the properties, I think that's one of the things that is talked about, from the city to property, new property owners that are going to do something with the property, that's important, but there's, if you go in that little area, there's a lot of things that is thriving. So it is a very interesting area. I remember when I was a kid out in Buffalo County, one of the things that happened was the school from where I lived, it was my elementary school, they took over some properties right across the street because they needed to expand, and so I haven't always been like too critical of local government, you know, taking over some properties to help out the development, not overly critical if it helps the area, but that's one point that I want to make is all those vacant spaces just going up along 24th Street, there's one on 24th and Parker, and then within the residential area, and that's another thing that's challenging about the area is that a lot of it is residential, so you kind of have to do some, you know, some fine tuning, surgical planning there. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents in the audience. Mr. Barney. And we have one by Zoom as well. You're back in cleanup again.
Willie Barney, 2401 Lake Street, Empowerment Network. A couple of things, obviously, we're in support of the plan, specifically this 24th and Lake Plan. I think there's just a lot to the rich history of the area, but also the thriving future of the area. So there's a lot of development going on, but two things, I wanted to go back to something that Manny said early on in the first hearing about Forever North, and I think it's reinforced, and I don't want to skip past the comments from Gwen and the impact on small businesses. So one of the things that Manny talked about is how do we, as this moves forward into implementation, and we're prayerful and hopeful that this will also be unanimous vote to move this plan forward, but it's incumbent upon all of us, including City Council, to make sure that those residents that live in the area, especially the seniors, what can we put in place? Because market values increasing is a good thing, however, if you have a limited capacity to pay those additional taxes, that is something that we're, that is a concern, that we just want to keep a very close eye on, especially our seniors. So what things, and I know Manny's done a lot of research around this, we've looked at it as well, there are policies that can be instituted to make sure that the seniors are protected based on the income that they have. The second thing is, as Vicki mentioned, the number of small businesses, some of them that have stuck through this 30, 40 years, Styles of Evolution, 15 years, LaFlore's, I'm not sure how long, but how do we make sure that those businesses, those small businesses, those residents benefit from this overall? What are the policies that can be put in place? And I know some of them, there's been recommendations on facade improvements, how do we make sure that those small businesses benefit from that? And in addition to that, as we have seen development happen, new home construction, what funds are available? And I know the Planning Department does a huge job based on the funds that they do have, but what funding could be made available for renovations of those other homes, for residents that live there, they want to see their home improved, they want to be a part, they're in support of the development, but they also want to benefit from it. So I don't, didn't want to skip past the concern that the community has had around making sure that our seniors are protected, making sure that the current residents benefit from this new development. They've stuck through it, they've been through it, how do they benefit? And then also, as we begin to bring in additional residents, and we don't want to skip over also the historic history of this and cultural district that we have. So there are Black-owned businesses, and one of the most exciting things that I see, I'm not sure if she's still here or not, but I'm hearing about development, a young African-American woman that has purchased property and looking to develop. A couple of folks that have gone through the Spark Academy on North 24th Street that have purchased the Native Omaha Days building, from what I understand, and they're going to renovate that. So one of the goals has been, how do residents benefit, and how do we respect that culture, the historic culture of African-Americans owning businesses in this corridor? So that development, a large, and then Carmen and her work and her team, those are some really exciting things, but I just didn't want to skip past that concern that's in the community, but we definitely support the approval, passage of this plan, the implementation that will take it to the next level. So thank you so much for your time. We appreciate your vote.
Thank you. Thanks for asking that, too. Other proponents, Ms. Tapio.
Carmen Tapio, 1500 North 24th Street, Suite 111. One of the things that I'd just like to emphasize is that in a time where many businesses are finding challenges in hiring people and available labor, I'm not having that problem. You know, to this day, I have thousands of qualified candidates in our database, and, you know, I see it as an opportunity, we see it as an opportunity, to continue our growth and really to leverage the people that are there, the talent that is there, and to provide upskilling and workforce development. That is the philosophy of ours, you know? We grow our business based on the strong culture that we have and the strong commitment that we have to invest in the community, but also to invest in our people as well. And so, you know, it's a unique situation. I serve as a member of the Executive Committee of the Chamber and on a number of other boards, and I talk to other CEOs that are really challenged in finding talent. We are not in that situation. And so it really is about full utilization of the workforce that is there in our particular business, call centers, you know, being a lifeblood and a rite of passage for many people in our community, but it's not, it's not about tell marketing. It is about the fact that our COO started at our company six years ago as an assistant, and today he is a COO. Our controller that we are bringing up in our organization started four years ago at our company as an entry-level job. So there are great opportunities for business, and I see this plan as a way of creating a business environment and a development environment so that we can continue to grow, but we can also attract other businesses to the area as well, and so I just don't want that fact to be overlooked. We can't be the only one, and I really commend city planning. I commend the community for the collaboration and the work together and really paving the way to create an environment where other businesses can come and be a part of the economy in North Omaha as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents in the audience?
I was already up here, but Willie reminded me that I have.
So I need to tell you that you can't appear twice, but I'm like.
Okay, well, I'm just dropping these off, just so you know.
Okay, great, thank you. I was going to be nice and call you up after saying you couldn't speak.
I shouldn't have said anything.
All right, thanks for that. All right, I do want to recognize a proponent by Zoom, Ms. Krieger. Get you off mute here in a second. All right, go ahead.
Thank you. Jennifer Krieger, Greater Omaha Chamber, 808 Connever Drive, Suite 400, 68102. Thank you, council members. We are supportive of this agenda item in the interest of time. I will just echo what I said on the previous item and that we're really inspired by what's happening and excited to be part of the future.
Great, thank you. Well, now move to opponents. Any opponents on number 12? Seeing none. Probably here. Seeing none, public hearing's closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to be like Ms. Krieger. In the interest of time, I'm just going to go ahead and move that we accept this-
Second.
-agenda item. Thank you.
Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to address one of the things about displacement. And I know Manny, actually at the planning board, had, I think if, if I remember, I had underlined and highlighted when the first bullet point was to, the number one priority was ensure that there would be no displacement resulting from any of the projects or plans. And, and that's what the, on Forever North, that was included in that plan, and, and so I know that's top of mind for, for the committee and for the work that'll be done there. One other quick thing, and I know Vicky Quetsferis mentioned it as well as some others, but, and we, we've talked about what happens in North Omaha, or what happens in South Omaha, affects all of Omaha. And I, I think, you know, we are all elected by district, but each and every decision that we contemplate, each and every vote that we make, we should be thinking how it affects Omaha as a whole. And I know I approach it that way, and that's why I'm absolutely going to be supportive of, of this, of this action. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. A, a quick comment regarding those two items that we just discussed. There's a lot of people that spoke here today on their tremendous potential in North Omaha in the years to come, and even prior projects we talked about in the last few weeks we voted on. And I want to just give a quick call out to the young men and women in Omaha, but particularly District 2. If you're looking for a job, you don't have to go to college, there's nothing wrong with a four-year degree, but I sit on the Omaha Federation of Labor as a treasurer of that organization, and it's building trade jobs. And if you want to be a steam fitter, a plumber, an electrician, a sheet metal worker, a welder, an iron worker, a laborer, I can go on and on and on. There's tremendous jobs that you can get paid on the job to get trained to do. The local 16, the plumbers locally, they put out a, a Facebook page that they're accepting applications starting March 7th for entry into the state-of-the-art and an industry-leading apprenticeship program. These building trades, and it doesn't have to be a union one, I mean, there's contractors in town that are good reputable contractors, but I encourage young men and women, especially in District 2, with these projects, talk to a building trade. Call my office and ask for Bagley, and I'll give you information on that, because there's great potential for, to make a good living building your community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Just wanted to thank you, Danny, for giving that shout-out to District 2. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights, there's a motion and a second to approve item number 12. Roll call.
Palermo, Row, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 12 is approved, 7 to 0.
We thank everyone for coming down, and thank you for your testimony.
Item 14, to consider a Class D liquor license for NP Mart 13 located at 901 North 24th Street, Suite A.
Item number 14 was postponed from the February 8th city council meeting. Public hearing and vote is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. Sean Kelly, 2804, South 87th Avenue, appearing today on behalf of the applicant. This application is actually proceeding the redevelopment of the northeast corner of 24th and Coming. The use will be similar grocery, gas station, along with a subway as well as a tenant inside. So happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents on 14 today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Sean, for bringing this project into the North 24th Street area. It's going to be very much welcome and very much needed. I also like to applaud you in your efforts to reach out to the neighbors, particularly Creighton University, and working through whatever concerns they may have had, just so that we could have something that's, something that we can be proud of located at 24th and Coming. I'm going to go ahead and move that we accept this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Second. No further lights, roll call.
Palermo, Row, Bagley, Harding, Johnson. Melton is absent. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 14 is approved, 6 to 0. Item 15, to consider a Class I liquor license for Frank's Pizzeria, Ralston, located at 5413 South 72nd Street. Number 116 is communication from the planning department regarding permits for the outdoor area.
Public hearing and vote on number 15 is today. Proponents, please. We have the proponent by Zoom, I believe. Mr. Halligan, we'll get you off mute.
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, name and address, please.
Perfect. Hi, I'm Matt Halligan, 5413 South 72nd Street. I own Frank's Pizzeria.
Great, here to answer questions?
I'm, I'm sorry, say that again.
Just, just here to answer questions, right?
Yeah, that's correct, yep.
All right. Any other proponents on number 15? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Motion a second, roll call.
Palermo, Row, Bagley, Harding, Johnson. Melton is absent. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 15 is approved, 6 to 0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 16, to consider a Class I liquor license for La Sierra located at 1702 South 10th Street is communication and support.
Public hearing and vote on number 16 is today. Proponents, please.
Hello, my name is Brenda Cusares. I'm here representing La Sierra Restaurant at 1702 South 10th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68107.
Thank you. Here to answer questions?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Any other proponents here today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I apologize, I couldn't hear your name when you were speaking. Can you repeat it?
Brenda Cusares?
I'm sorry?
Brenda?
Brenda, okay. Brenda, thanks for coming down.
Sure.
I, a couple concerns I got, not because you're applying for a liquor license, it's just that in past council meetings, my friend and colleague, Councilmember Johnson, we went through an exercise where a business applied for a liquor license, and the owner of that establishment had not contacted the neighborhood groups. Have you talked to any of the neighborhood groups down in your neighborhood?
We're actually part of the Dollman Neighborhood Association.
Right.
A lot of the people who are members of that association are actually our customers. So we did have a few members, I believe, wrote letters in, also came to a restaurant or establishment to let us know that they were in support, that they couldn't make it, but they would try to send in some letters in writing to support us.
I, I did get a couple, there was a couple letters in support, and I also heard from a couple business owners in the neighborhood. And again, not that they don't want you to succeed, or against what you're applying for, but I, I would like to make a motion to lay this over for two weeks, just so you can contact, I, I left a message this morning, I guess it was this afternoon, with Mary with the Dollman Neighborhood Association.
Okay.
And I was planning on going to their meeting last night, but I had an illness, my daughter and the family, so I wasn't able to make it, but I reached out to her today, and I called, I, I called on Sunday and spoke to one of the business owners next to you, and also, I'm sorry, I'm pulling up my notes here.
Amalia Cusares?
Thank you, Amalia. I spoke to her and her husband, and they're in, the hours of operation, are they going to be 11:00 AM to 8?
Yes, yes. Currently, our hours of operation are 11 to 8. They are Tuesday through Sunday, and we do not intend to extend the hours any further. Our purpose or plan of having the liquor license is just to offer alcoholic beverages while they're eating, not to turn it into a bar and have them afterwards.
Okay, and would you allow people to take alcohol from the establishment after they're done eating?
Uh, no, I believe you did ask that on Sunday. We did confirm that, no, that's not, while it's part of the liquor license offering, while you're requesting it, that's not our purpose or intent, no. Just while you're there, while you're eating, consuming, if you leave, your alcoholic beverage stays there.
Okay, and I really do appreciate you answering the questions, and I'm not trying to-
No, not at all.
-play gotcha or anything. I want you to succeed, because I'll be down to have lunch-
That would be great.
-when you get rolling, and maybe after work, I'll go have a beer and a taco.
Sounds good. No tacos there, but you're welcome to come try our food anytime.
All right, well, I'll look forward to that. But can you please, in the next couple weeks, if you don't mind, reaching out to the business owners around you? They, there's just concerns that if the parking, for instance, in front of the bake shop next to you there, their hours are seven, let's see, 7:00 to noon, Tuesday through Saturday, and you're aware that they have that parking space as lease in front of their business there?
That shouldn't be an issue. It's actually, under our contract, the owner of the property, his name is Alan Zbarth. We've actually had talks with them before regarding that parking because they believe that it's part theirs because they have a sign on the fence that says that it's their daycare. But that land is actually under our lease agreement that we could provide a, a copy of, so there shouldn't be an issue with that because it's part of our lease agreement.
So again, I appreciate you answering the questions today. I want to make a motion to lay this over for two weeks because I wanted to try to get in contact with Mary at the Dollman Neighborhood Association, and I want there to be good communication. So when you're back in two weeks, any questions that the neighbors or the neighborhood associations or the businesses have, then we can get those answered, and then I'll look forward to supporting you in a couple of weeks.
Should I be waiting for those questions or those answers, or should I be following up with Mary myself?
I'll, Mary, I left her a message today.
Yeah.
So you're, feel free to reach out to Mary at any time, or me as well, I can give you my card-
Sure, I think, I think we have your phone number.
Yeah, okay, okay, thanks. But my motion is to lay this over for two weeks, and we can have a discussion then.
Second. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I think we had some questions at pre-council today about whether or not there, there was a restaurant tax that was owed. I wondered if that had been cleared up, or if anyone from finance or was here to-
I can answer for you, if you'd like.
Okay, yeah, sure.
So there's, there was an issue with the tax being paid. I think we paid all of it to the state. So instead of separating out 7%, 2.5%, we actually paid all the tax to the state. I did talk to the auditor who we were working with, Mr. John Colal, I believe his name is, the auditor. We explained the situation, and all he said was that we would have to create an amendment. So he's told me what file, what form I need to process to go ahead and create the amendment to get that tax back so that we can allocate it to the proper entity.
Okay. All right, and I assume if, if we do lay this over, we can make sure that all that's verified in the interim, too.
Thank you. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
One last quick, thanks for my friend, Councilman Harding, for bringing that up as well. I just want, can you come up, and I'll give you my card and my cell numbers on here. Thanks, Brenda. Thanks, Mr. President.
Okay. Motion a second to lay it over for two weeks. Roll call.
Palermo, Row, Bagley, Harding, Johnson. Melton is absent. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 6 to 0.
Thanks.
Two weeks?
Yep.
Item 17, to consider a Class I liquor license for X Golf Omaha located at 808 North 102nd Street, Suite 102.
Public hearing and vote on number 17 is today. Proponents, please.
Alyssa Rose, 808 North 102nd, just here for any questions.
Thank you. I think we also have Michael, is he a proponent by Zoom?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you.
Michael Rubelo, 808 North 102nd Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Sorry, forgot the zip code.
68144.
68144, thank you, sorry. I am, I am the owner, Alyssa. Ally is my, my general manager. I'm just here for any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Second, roll call.
Palermo, Row, Bagley, Harding, Johnson. Melton is absent. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 17 is approved, 6 to 0.
Thank you. Thank you.
You bet.
Item 18, to consider a special designated liquor license application for Two Fine Irishmen located at 18101 R Plaza for an outdoor beer garden on March 17th from 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
Public hearing on number 18 is today. Proponents, please.
Kyron O'Brien, 13974 Hickory Circle.
Thank you.
Here to answer any questions.
Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Row, you're recognized.
Kyron, thank you for coming down this afternoon.
You bet.
I know you didn't expect to be here for two and a half hours, but I appreciate your making the effort.
You betcha.
I just had a couple of questions I wanted to bring up. It was last summer, we had some issues with some of the neighbors to your south, and with some noise, with some bands in the, on the outside. And I just wanted to make sure, you know, given it's the middle of March, I doubt that you're going to have a band playing out in the front of the, of the operation, right?
The reason why we're getting an SDL is you need one to get a Budweiser truck to keep it refrigerated. You know, you order more for St. Patrick's Day. And an SDL also allows you to send back the unused beer. So that's the difference, and why most Irish bars get SDLs, it's easier to plan for inventory.
Okay.
Like, we're not having an outdoor area.
Okay. I, I guess that was just the main thing, I want to make sure that the noise level was somewhat reasonable. And I did notice, and I did appreciate that you're only requesting that SDL till 11 o'clock, not, not until 2:00 AM, so I think that-
We're hoping to have everybody cleared out by midnight.
Yeah, I think that made the neighbors happy as well. The other reason I called you down here is I, I know that Councilmember Bagley enjoys a pint now and then. He's mentioned that, and I just wanted him to know that there are Irish establishments west of 72nd Street.
Yep.
And if you go to the far reaches of District 5, Danny, you can order a half and half, along with some really good fish and chips.
Yes, sir.
So thanks for coming down here, appreciate that.
If you're into it, the pipe and drums show up at 11:00 AM that day.
Tell them to bring the Irish ambassador, too.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Councilmember Row, I'll see you after the session. Thank you.
No further lights. Was there a motion, Mr. Row? Roll call.
Palermo, Row, Bagley, Harding, Johnson. Melton is absent. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 18 is approved, 6 to 0. Item 19, to consider a special designated liquor license applications for Maloney's Irish Pub located at 1830 North 72nd Street for St. Patrick's Day events on March 17th from 6:00 AM to 2:00 AM, and on March 18th through 22nd from 3:00 PM to 2:00 AM with music until midnight each night.
Public hearing and vote on number 19 is today. Proponents, please. I believe we have Mr. Ellis by Zoom.
Uh, Ms. Ellis, I guess.
Ms. Ellis, all right, thank you.
Hi. I, my name's Jordan, I'm 1830 North 72nd Street here in Omaha. I'm here for any questions. I do just want to clarify beforehand, we aren't planning on having music every single night. We're kind of in the same situation as the gentleman from The Fine Irishmen. We're getting this to be able to return liquor. We are having bands, but they will not be going past midnight. So that is our plan.
Great, thanks for that clarification.
Yes.
Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Palermo, Row, Bagley, Harding, Johnson. Melton is absent. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 19 is approved, 6 to 0.
Thank you.
You bet. Good luck.
Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items number 20 through 31 were held on February 8th. Is there a motion? Roll call.
Palermo, Row, Bagley, Harding, Johnson. Melton is absent. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 6 to 0.
In this next section, we'll take items number 38 and 41 off the consent agenda just for some additional discussion. So first, we'll take the other items. So public hearings on agenda items number 32 through 37, and 39 through 40, and 42 through 47 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Any speakers on those items? Seeing none, public hearing's closed. Seeing none, public hearings closed. Motion, a second, roll call.
Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Well now, go ahead.
Oh, item thirty-eight, resolution to approve the nomination of Rudy Smith Senior Street as a commemorative street name on Lake Street from Thirty Fourth Avenue to Thirty Sixth Street.
Public hearing on vote on number thirty-eight is today. I understand we have some family members here. We appreciate hearing from you on this, um, commemorative street in honoring of Rudy Smith.
My name is Charlotte Abram. Um, my address is forty-nine sixteen North Fiftieth Street here in Omaha, Nebraska. Uh, I am a proponent. I am a childhood friend from the age of birth on of Rudy Smith. His wife, Lana Smith, his widow, is here. Um, some of you might know Rudy's story. Rudy was one of the protesters in front of the Omaha World Herald in the sixties. And he was protesting the fact that there were no African-American, um, uh, staff members there. And so they asked him, well, why don't you apply? And Rudy did. And he worked his way up and got the job. Rudy, uh, had, there's a book the World Herald has, um, published of Rudy's photography. He was one of the photographers during the, uh, riots in Omaha and took, uh, some very moving pictures, uh, all throughout his life. And his legacy stands for itself. Uh, and I would just, uh, continue to ask you to support and to remember this outstanding citizen who happened to be a black man who worked his way up and was able to have an eye that let so many other people see the reality of what's going on in our city and our world. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that background. On top of being a great photographer, he was a real super nice guy, too. Other proponents, please. Ms. Cavett, welcome.
Hello, Reverend Portia Cavett. Um, I come on behalf of serving as president of the Great Plains Black History Museum, twenty-two twenty-one North Twenty Fourth Street. And, uh, I come asking that you would vote in agreeance of naming, um, Lake Street between Thirty Fourth and Thirty Sixth after, uh, Rudy Smith. Rudy served as the president of the Board of Directors. Uh, and upon his death, I assumed that role as his vice president, I am now the president of the Great Plains Black History Museum. So we come in support of his family and his friends and ask that you would see through the, uh, lens of Rudy, all that he has done and what he represents. And that portion of Lake Street should bear his name, that we might remember all that he has done, even in the midst of the riots, as well as telling the history of North Omaha. So thank you. And we will lift him up as often as we can at the Great Plains Black History Museum. We have named him a Board of Director Emeritus of the Great Plains Black History Museum.
Thank you. Other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, you know, it's, it's interesting. I, um, when I worked for, uh, for Hal, when Hal Dahl was mayor and I got to know, um, Mr. Smith pretty, pretty well. But it's, it, what's interesting to me is that, um, for all the kids that, and, and parents who got their kids to read the paper. And, and when you start out, you're looking at the pictures mostly and, and the stories that those pictures told, made an impression upon me when I was growing up. And, and Rudy was, he was, he was the, the, the one who took a lot of those pictures. And, and the stories that, um, that, that kids, uh, learned when they picked up the Omaha World Herald, um, were, were told by those pictures. You know, the old saying of a picture is worth a thousand words and, and all those, um, the, the history, the, the action photos, the, the, the photos that you just looked at and you could, you could read your own story into it. I think, uh, those, those impressions, um, that were made by him upon the citizens of Omaha are invaluable. And, and to have the commemorative street naming is, is probably not enough to, to recognize the great work that he did. But, um, but certainly will be supportive of this.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you. Um, Rudy will definitely be missed in North Omaha and Omaha as a whole. He certainly made a remarkable history. Um, he was really ahead of his time in terms of his photography. And I just want to, um, thank you, uh, the family, uh, to include Ms. Abrams, um, for sharing him with Omaha, Nebraska. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. It, it's a great honor. It's well deserved for Mr. Smith. Looking at, by way of history, it's impressive reading his accounts and, as my colleagues mentioned, his contribution to this city. He was a man of conviction that lived his life serving others through pictures and journalism. And that's a tremendous difference. And I, I always love watching Sunday mornings, a guy named Willie Geist on NBC. He does a segment of somebody of a life well-lived. And they go through the story of the person they're talking about that Sunday. And I can't help but to think that as a family sits here today, it's a great honor to see you here. And I know Rudy's looking down, knowing that he had a life well-lived and threw your nods. And I know you're smiling under your mask, that you're agreeing with me. So it's a great honor for all of us to, I'm certainly going to support this. So thank you for being here today.
Thank you. No further lights. Is there a motion? Motion, a second, roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item thirty-eight is approved, seven to zero.
Thanks for being here.
Item forty-one, a resolution to approve the agreement with MATCH and the total amount of fifty million dollars in emergency rental assistance program funds for the continuation of a short-term rental and utility assistance for households impacted by the COVID-nineteen pandemic.
Public hearing and vote on number forty-one is today. We felt this was a significant item that deserved some conversation for the public's knowledge. So I wanted to have that, uh, conversation now with proponents. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, Kevin Anderson, Deputy Chief of Staff in the mayor's office, uh, here in support of this agreement, which will put forth an, an additional fifty million dollars, uh, to fulfill a great community need out there. I want to take the opportunity to commend both the MATCH organization and Planning Department's H C D staff led by Mr. Bill Lukash in their work in the successful distribution of nearly forty million dollars to fulfill this need to date and their work in securing this additional fifty million dollars, uh, to get money in the hands of people who need it as a result of, of the pandemic uh, and, and fulfill a great community need, as I mentioned. This came about with a lot of coordination between the state of Nebraska and the Fed Treasury, uh, to reallocate fifty million dollars that was not being utilized, uh, by the state. Um, and again, keeping it within our borders and getting it in the hands of, of people who need it. So, uh, I believe Mr. Lukash and Lisa Fox with MATCH are here to, for a brief, uh, presentation. So I'll be available for any questions.
Thank you. Next proponent. Mr. Lukash.
Oh, hi. Thank you so much, Bill Lukash, um, Assistant Director, Omaha Planning Department, Community Development Division. Just wanted to give you a little bit of context about how these, um, funds have, have gone over the last few months. In March of twenty twenty-one, the city council approved an agreement with MATCH to operate an emergency rental assistance program for twenty-two million dollars. In, uh, August of twenty twenty-one, we, the city council, excuse me, approved an agreement for, um, sixteen million dollars of ERAP two funds. At that time, we had identified that there might be an opportunity to get more funding in the future, um, around December first of twenty twenty-one. And we weren't really sure when that would, those funds would come to us. Um, unfortunately, um, it has taken until now to get those additional funds. We did have to ha- hit pause on the, um, uh, the program for just a few weeks here in February because we did actually run out of funds or MATCH ran out of funds. So yes, we are thankful to have these fifty million dollars. They are reallocated from the state to the treasury, back to the city of Omaha. Uh, we did ask for an additional twenty-two million dollars through a separate application process. We have not heard back from that, on that yet. Uh, the thought there was that perhaps there were other funds from the state of Nebraska or from other nearby community or, um, states that hadn't been used that we could capture. Um, so that's still hanging out there. I don't know if we will get those or not, but we do have these fifty million dollars. They were deposited into our account, um, uh, in early February. I, the exact date escapes me, but we are ready to go to provide those funds to the community once again. Uh, I'll step aside and let Lisa talk about the information that she just passed out.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Uh, my name is actually Lisa Vukov, Vias and Victor, U K O, Vias and Victor, um, representing the metro area continuum of care for the homeless at six zero zero one Dodge Street, Suite one seventeen. Um, we have been operating the emergency rental assistance program, uh, in partnership with the city of Omaha since April of twenty twenty-one. You all should have received a handout that gives a basic breakdown as to who we have served through this project, um, thus far. As you will see, we have surpassed over thirty-seven million dollars in emergency rental assistance into this community. And as Mr. Lukash, uh, recently, or just mentioned, um, we essentially ran out of money, um, a few weeks ago and have had to pause that process. During this pause, while we were awaiting the time, um, to come before city council, we have actually taken, uh, a very deep dive into the program as it is and made some improvements to the program. We are going to be, uh, launching a more streamlined application process that will hopefully allow folks to get approved faster. Um, we also are, uh, looking into, or we are going to be implementing, um, a, uh, a resource specialist position through all of our partner agencies for those households that are going to be returning for second round assistance. One of the things that we are really trying to prepare for in the future is the cliff effect that is going to come when these funds ultimately disappear from our community, whether that be when the expiration date comes or when we run out again. Um, we recognize that there's been a huge influx in emergency rental assistance. And when we go back to the status quo, um, we're, we're going to need to have some, some plans in place for households that are continuing to struggle. So this resource specialist position is going to be through all of our partner agencies and they are going to be assessing for the needs of households that are returning to request additional assistance. They are going to serve as a conduit to those entities, um, that can provide those resources and essentially hopefully set the, uh, households up for success beyond this. Um, there are a few data points that, um, I just wanted to mention that did not make it onto this sheet. Um, while we have the racial demographics breakdown, we do not have a breakdown of ethnicity on there. And I thought it would be good to also provide that. Um, for, uh, all of the applications that we have received, eighty-two percent of those identified as non-Hispanic. Seven percent of those identified as Hispanic. Uh, eight percent of those individuals preferred not to answer the question and three percent reported that they did not know.
Great. Thank you. Any other proponents today?
It would be very strange if I was here as an opponent, right? You all know me well enough at this point. Uh, Erin Feigstinger, Director of Avastain Policy, it's together. We are one of the partner organizations that, uh, my good friend Lisa was up here talking about. Eight one two South Twenty Fourth Street, six eight one oh eight. And I was asked to come down and talk about the Tenant Assistance Project and its connection to emergency rental assistance funds. And I'd also like to highlight just a little bit of what we've been able to do as a result of E R A in our community and also because of the city's good decision to allow community organizations to disperse these funds as opposed to someone else. Um, the Tenant Assistance Project, or T A P, was launched in Douglas County in August twenty twenty-one and the CDC eviction moratorium expired very shortly after that. T A P is coordinated through the Nebraska State Bar Association's Volunteer Lawyers Project, which recruits volunteer attorneys like Councilmember Melton to help people through an eviction hearing and negotiate with the landlords and their attorneys to come to a different resolution than what I would call a get-out-now eviction, meaning the eviction judgment is ordered and that writ issues immediately and the constable could technically be at your door by the time you got home from work that night. Uh, before T A P, that immediate eviction judgment rate, those get-out-now evictions was around ninety-five percent in Douglas County Eviction Court. Since T A P started in August twenty twenty-one, we have seen almost immediately that for those evictions where the tenant shows up to get a volunteer lawyer and because of outreach and publicity around T A P, which I hope you will spread to your constituents, we've had an increase in tenants appearing for their eviction hearings and being able to access that help. But, um, with the intervention of T A P, about ninety percent of those cases now are getting dismissed or ending in stipulated agreements that give the tenant more time to move out, to get connected to resources or fulfill the other things that allow them to stay in their homes, um, and/or avoid an eviction judgment on their housing record. And all of these things have served to increase housing stability and reduce homelessness in our community, which I know is all of your goals on council. Um, but how does T A P work with emergency rental assistance? There is about thirty organizations orbiting T A P that, that help to fulfill all those other aspects of an eviction, um, and provide support. So like, for example, this morning I was connecting a woman, uh, to, um, our organization so that she could stay in her home and fulfill the results of her, or the, the parts of her stipulated agreement. We've also helped people like pay for dumpsters so that they could clean out their house and stay in their housing. Just all sorts of, um, the complex issues that people face leading up to an eviction, um, as well as, uh, the enormous, uh, lift that it takes to make sure they avoid eviction, avoid homelessness after the fact. Um, T A P has a MATCH representative zoomed in to the lobby of eviction court. I know we all despise Zoom, but thank goodness for it. Um, and that helps connect both tenants and landlords to emergency rental assistance funds. Um, this incredibly simple system has been overwhelmingly effective at making sure that these emergency rental funds are being used exactly how they're supposed to be used to prevent homelessness. Tenants and landlords, many of whom did not know about the availability of these funds until walking into eviction court that morning, uh, can walk right over to the computer and start their application. Um, and that means that we have one less person becoming homeless that day and one more landlord who's able to cover the costs of providing and maintaining affordable housing in the community. Of the four hundred and people, four hundred and, uh, fifty people facing eviction who have been helped by T A P since August twenty twenty-one, so that's four hundred and fifty people that have been served by T A P, uh, sixty-eight percent or third, three hundred and six of them have been connected to and received E R A funds directly in court from MATCH. That's three hundred and six Omahans who would otherwise be homeless but for the availability of these funds and our ability to connect, uh, people to resources. Just this morning, I saw two people avoid an immediate eviction because of the availability of E R A funds through MATCH out of thirteen hearings. So that's, that's a good rate for us in eviction court. Um, some context why this matters. Omaha, uh, accounts for about fifty percent of statewide eviction filings annually. So we make up fifty percent of all the evictions in the state and that's around thirty-five hundred a year annually. Um, in twenty twenty, because of the various moratoria, that number dropped to a little over eighteen hundred, uh, filings in Douglas County. In twenty twenty-one, that number rose to twenty-five hundred with the expiration of those moratoria. But I want you to understand that that number could have been so much higher if we did not have emergency rental assistance. Uh, it's the only thing stopping people from becoming, um, homeless. And it has allowed us to do incredible things, um, such as T A P. But, uh, just to give you an illustration, last week there were a hundred and thirty-five eviction filings in Douglas County, which is nearly double anything that we've seen since March twenty twenty, uh, when COVID started. And a hundred and twenty-one of those filings were for non-payment. So these are all people who needed help. Because there is such a high need for E R A in Omaha and because we've been so efficient at meeting that need that we had to pause E R A applications and processing until this payment on this, and this agenda item came through, uh, fewer landlords and their attorneys were willing to make deals last week because they were nervous that that funding wasn't going to be available that everyone in that courtroom was relying on. Um, and I'm going to wrap it up, I promise you, Councilmember Festerson. I also want to point out, though, that we've been able to develop really comprehensive support systems around eviction court and for people facing evictions in a way that we have never been able to do before. And that's entirely because of the availability of E R A funds and the willingness by our local electeds, such as yourself, to trust us as community organizations to know- community organizations to know how to distribute these funds. An example is that TAP has just recently contracted with our organization to provide a case manager that will just be sitting in eviction court, ready to connect people to whatever resources they need right there in court. We can do a lot of great things with these funds, things that will allow us to reduce homelessness and make our community stronger and more stable as a result. So, thank you for this, your support of this item. I am always happy to come and talk about evictions and homelessness and housing instability, though I should note, I do have other more fun interests, like I don't just talk about this all the time. They were just talking about pizza and La Sierra. I'm interested in both of those things. So, anyway, happy to answer any and all of your questions about TAP, housing, homelessness, maybe pizza.
All right. Thank you. Other proponents today?
Good almost evening here. Janet Bonnet, 4502 South 14th Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I have to tip my hat to both of these ladies and their organizations. I'm an interpreter in court. The other day, I was called in to small claims court and was mobbed by people that needed help with housing issues. Thank God that there were folks out there in the hallway willing to help them and ready. If there's going to be someone there every day, every time that there's a case like this, it's going to be very important. This money is absolutely essential to help areas particularly like mine, South Omaha. I am astounded, though, to hear that only 7% of applicants were Hispanic or identified as Hispanic, because I see people being evicted all the time in my area. And I did talk to a person in the hallway who said she felt she would be rejected because she doesn't have a formal contract for the part of a house that she rents. So, there are serious issues out there for housing. I'm glad to see that it's being handled by organizations in town, not outsourced. And I'm also very pleased to know that the city of Omaha, I hope, will be accepting this funding and using it appropriately.
Thank you. Other proponents today?
Luis Jimenez, 2709 Dooley Avenue. I'm in support, I've supported the federal funding for COVID response whenever I can because there needs to be a financial response. And I noticed here in my ZIP code, 68105, it's one of the higher ZIP codes. It's just right over there, not too far from here. So, this money is needed. I'll thank also Councilmember Melton and the organizations being represented here for this work. If you turn, if you turn your paper around, you'll actually see that throughout the last two years, the funding, this funding has, month-to-month has gone down. You see this from up here, $6 million in July 2021, and now February 2022, it's at less than $2 million. So, it is an emergency, and I'm glad you're going to respond as such. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Thanks. I know it's getting later, but I really want to thank Lisa, MATCH, Erin, Lori, all the attorneys that show up every day, four days per week. Thursday's the only day off. There's no eviction court on Thursdays. But there have just been so many people that have really dedicated a lot of time to this. And I really do think the council should be very happy and proud that we selected MATCH to do this. MATCH isn't only just taking those applications. Like Erin said, they are there every morning, available by Zoom. We've got MATCH on the computer answering questions. The lawyers are able to talk to them about clients. And then even after that, the responsiveness of MATCH has been incredible. And I just wanted to say thank you. I know you're kind of behind the podium there, I can't see you, Lisa. But Erin's response, too, and the amount of people that we, that TAP and Erin and MATCH has been able to help with these funds has been incredible. And I do agree, when these are used, hopefully between now and then, we'll find a more permanent solution to this. So, thank you to everyone.
Thank you. And Lisa, may I ask you a question, too? Or actually, I just want to give you the podium for a second because I was talking to a constituent this morning who was very much in favor of this and had been a little bit confused about recent reports. As you noted, the city of Omaha did accept the 40 million, and we did distribute it through MATCH, and I totally agree with Ms. Melton, that was a great decision. You've got it out a lot faster and in a lot more coordinated way than I think the city could have done on its own. And so, we want to continue that success. But they had heard that the state had declined money, and that's also true. But the money we're talking about here today, the extra $50 million, was money that was already not used by the state, that we were able to take advantage of and reallocate to the city. Is that correct?
That is correct. There's a lot of confusion, I think, going on out there right now. And what we're talking about here, the U.S. Treasury actually issued two allocations of funding through two different congressional acts. And so, what we're talking about here is the original ERA or ERAP I funds that the state of Nebraska received to the tune of $158 million, and the city of Omaha received to about $22 million. We blew through that first $22 million for the city of Omaha very quickly. The city of Omaha had applied for ERAP II funds, which came down through the American Rescue Plan. And we blew through that money as well already. And so, through the state, their original $158 million of those ERA I funds had been spent very slowly. And so, through this process, since the city of Omaha, as well as our colleagues in the city of Lincoln, since our funds were being drastically depleted, there was an opportunity to go back to the U.S. Treasury and say that we wanted to redistribute these funds across the areas of Nebraska that were becoming depleted, and that was ultimately accepted by the U.S. Treasury. And so, these are going back to those original ERA I funds that have a sunset date of September 30th of 2022, so this year, very different than what is currently in the Nebraska legislature regarding the second round of ERA funds, which of course was the $16 million that we got here in Omaha. And that, those actually have a later sunset of 2025, and so.
Yeah. Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah.
And I, for one, do hope the state changes its mind and does apply for that money. But I would do want to thank you and Mr. Lukash for realizing the opportunity with this particular fund so that it doesn't just go back to the federal government, but can be used by constituents here in Omaha effectively. And as you note, that needs to be distributed by September, but I don't think we have any concern about that being possible, given the history here of the 40 million that you've already been able to distribute, right?
Correct. In fact, we have been building, we've continued to approve applications that are in our queue during this pause period, and we've already accumulated almost $3 million, or a little, actually, over $3 million, that as soon as this hits our bank account, we have to pay out. So, we're already tapping into it.
Great. And for those that are watching, and actually, I know our cable was down earlier in the meeting, but it is back up now. So, I wanted to give you a chance, for those that are watching that maybe aren't aware of how to apply for that, just a little commercial about how they do reach out to MATCH, what your contact information is. And by the way, MATCH stands for the Metro Area Continuum of Care for the Homeless. It's an acronym that sometimes is kind of a tongue twister, but I want folks to know what it is you do. And then maybe just a quick information session about how they can contact you.
Sure. So, we have a website that is kind of the gateway into our application. It is known as matchconnect.org, or M-A-C-C-H-C-O-N-N-E-C-T.org. Through there, you will be initially instructed to enter your physical address of your rental unit. That is so that we can verify that it is within the city of Omaha boundaries, because we cannot pay outside of the city of Omaha. And then from there, you are connected to our portal where you will begin your application. For those who may not have internet access or who are struggling with completing an online application, we do have a contract in our partnership with the United Way 211 Call Center. They can begin applications over the phone, and they can also help folks navigate any challenges that they are having with their applications. We do have an email address for any inquiries. It's known as omahaerap, or E-R-A-P, at endhomelessnesstoday.org. And we are always prepared to take questions and field any challenges that folks are having with their applications.
Excellent. Thank you. No further lights. Is there a motion? Second. Roll call.
Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 41 is approved, seven to zero.
Thanks.
Item 48, a resolution to approve the settlement agreement for Brandon Bierman versus city of Omaha in the amount of $75,000.
Public hearing and vote on number 48 is today. Proponents, please.
Now, here's the city of Omaha Law Department here to answer any questions.
Any other proponents today? Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 48 is approved, seven to zero. Item 49, an ordinance approving a bid from Northwest Electric LLC for the city of Omaha Maintenance Services for various electrical equipment in the annual estimated cost of
Public hearing on number 49 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed.
Item 50, an ordinance to accept the bid of Egan Supply Company to provide janitorial supplies for the Omaha Fire Department at a total cost of $32,796.50.
Public hearing on number 50 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none any opponents. Public hearing is closed.
Items 51 through 63 do not require public hearing or a city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on an agenda for consideration.
Second. Roll call.
Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 5:01.
Thanks.